Good morning. This is the public hearing of the Committee at the whole regarding Bills Number 150162, 150163, 150164, and Resolution Number 150179. Ms. Lewis, please read the titles of the bills and resolutions.
Bill Number 150162, in an ordinance to adopt the capital program for the six fiscal years 2016 through 2021 inclusive. Bill Number 150163, in ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2016 capital budget. Bill Number 150164, in ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2016. And Resolution Number 150179, providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2016 through 2020 and incorporating proposed changes with respect to fiscal year 2015, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the authority pursuant to the intergovernmental cooperation agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council, approved by the mayor on January 3, 1992. Bill Number 1563-a by between the city and the authority.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Today we continue the public hearing of the Committee at the whole to consider various bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal 2016, a capital program, and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal 2016 through fiscal 2021. Today we will hear testimony from the City Controller's office and the Streets Department, and later in the day we will have public testimony. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, President Clark, members of the council. I'm Controller Alan Buckowitz, and I'm here today to testify on the 2016 operating budget. I'm joined here today by First Deputy City Controller Bill Rubin, our post-audit deputy, Jerry Machula, and pre-audit deputy John Thomas, as well as our Administrative Services Director, Andrea Rose. The mayor's proposed fiscal year 2016 operating budget for the Controller's office includes a general fund appropriation of $8,295,335. I would like again to thank all of our employees who continue to provide quality service to the citizens of the city. They are to be commended and congratulated. This year, our post-audit unit audited all 42 city departments included in our annual auditor's report, and did so for both fiscal years 2013 and 2014. In addition, they completed seven performance or special audits, including licenses and inspections, performance audit of demolition practices, a review of the city's overtime costs, and a review of Recreation Advisory Council's bank accounts. All of these audits have been sent to you and can also be found on our website. With our mission to provide a more efficient and effective government, it's with great pleasure to announce that we will begin training this week on the new electronic work paper system that will reduce paper consumption and printing resources and accelerate the process used to conduct our audits by eliminating the need to manually enter many of the required fields. Our ongoing development of quality professional auditors within the post-audit unit has been extremely valuable, and I would like to thank Jerry Machula for his outstanding work in encouraging and inspiring our post-audit staff. We now have 42 percent of our audit staff with CPA certification, which I think is a record for the office. We've partnered with the Becker Group to help those who have not received their CPA, and we will defray the cost in return for retention of the employees upon completion. I'd like to acknowledge the post-audit staff for recently being honored with a 2014 Knighton Award for their work in the performance audit of the city's demolition practices. This is the second consecutive year that our office has been recognized by the Association of Local Government Auditors as producing one of the best performance audits in North America. Our pre-audit division provides oversight of the city's payment and purchasing processes. Pre-audit monitors, reviews, and approves or disapproves all requisitions for payment of city funds and responds to daily requests for information regarding vendor payments. This division just last week was able to reach an agreement after extensive wrangling and, again, John Thomas, who has made it a personal mission of his to really seek justice for the taxpayer. We were able to get $95,000 returned to the city by a vendor who submitted invoices with incorrect charges and has also agreed to discontinue bidding on certain work. Our fraud unit has worked on many cases involving city departments. One to particularly note is the Recreation Center case that has been given to the District Attorney's Office for further review. Our Policy Department headed by Dr. Jeffrey Hornstein has developed several reports, most notably our review of the Convention and Visitors Bureau where we analyzed the workings of the two tourism agencies responsible for driving traffic to this city. We have partnered with many departmental commissioners in an effort to collectively resolve the tremendous obstacles they have faced, and I look forward to continued cooperation in an effort to streamline city services and reduce their overall cost to the Philadelphia taxpayer. Finally, I'd like to mention the Youth Mentor Program, which our office implemented this year. Our staff partnered with Operation Hope, a nonprofit that focuses on financial empowerment to provide financial education to elementary and middle school students. We also established a course for high school students to provide real-life experience by offering a unique exposure to a professional office environment. I appreciate this opportunity to come here and present our testimony, and I look forward to working with you in the coming year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Buckowitz. I have a couple of questions, not necessarily in your testimony. Your role as City Controller, can you tell me the limitations that you have with respects to the charter as it relates to the School District of the City of Philadelphia?
Well, the charter only authorizes us to be the auditor of the financial statements for the School District, and that problem is compounded by the School Takeover Act, which doesn't even mention us. So first of all, we have, there's always several sources of authority for the Controller. There's state law, and then there's the question to what extent it's been superseded by the city charter. Generally, the charter governs. With respect to the city government, we specifically have the power to audit whatever, in our judgment, we think will be productive. We can do performance audits of licenses and inspections. We can determine if the department says this is what their mission is. Are the tactics that they're using actually going to implement that mission? We're able to find substantial savings. We're able to look for potential corruption. We are able to be a strong voice, and I think we have a substantial record over nine years in improving operations in the city. On the School District, it's a totally different situation. We can sample whether certain items have been placed in the appropriate column, and we have, at times, had to use ingenuity to look at things such as the condition of buildings in the School District. There was one year, two years in fact, where we did snap inspections of school buildings, and we're told by the superintendent at the time, I think it was Tom Brady, I think it was Paul Vallas and then Tom Brady, and they both said we had no right to be in the school buildings, or, and we had to make recourse at that time to saying that we simply would not certify the list of assets, certifying that they in fact had boilers and heating systems and cooling systems and whatever else they said unless we could eyeball it, and therefore reluctantly they let us in the building, and we found many more extensive code violations. So it has always been a question of trying to stretch your ingenuity with the School District, but the fact that we do not have specific, the same kind of language that we have in the charter with respect to city departments is a major handicap.
So in the SRC legislation, i.e. state takeover, did they spell out in very specific terms prohibition as it relates to your ability to do audits or request information?
I don't have it memorized, but I don't think we're even mentioned in the School Takeover legislation. So I think that the intent is that it's within the Auditor General's scope, and I do remember when Senator Fumo was still the Appropriations Chairman, he very specifically told me that he knew I didn't have the power to check into School District contracts or other School District operations because he wrote the law so that we wouldn't.
You know, I don't necessarily, I mean Senator Fumo was quite a crafty person, but I don't know if he necessarily should be viewed as the origin of the Bible as it relates to preemption in School District matters. That whole SRC was done relatively quickly.
Well, we studied the law after that conversation, and I couldn't, believe me, we tried to find something in there to fight him with it, and I think the position that we took, I think it was Jerry Machula who gave us our position at that time, which was that we had the power to follow city money wherever it went.
That was one of my follow-up questions.
Yeah, so since there were some city appropriations to the School District, we argued that we had the authority to continue to follow that money to the School District, but we didn't find any language in the School Takeover legislation that authorized us to do that.
All right. So, understanding, you know, I've been on Telegram for a particular strategy that we may be embarking on. So getting back to following the money, so is it your belief that if there's revenue targeted to schools other than the traditional taxes that were designated solely for schools, you know, such as the cigarette tax or the sales tax, but other types of revenue that went to schools, would we have the ability to follow that money?
I'm trying to think operationally how that would work. You know, we're constantly in a arm wrestling contest with the NUTR administration over many of the reviews we do with departments. So for example, in LNI, we've put out an extensive list of subpoena requests for documentation. We can't do that with the School District. If we issued a subpoena to the School District asking them for details of their spending on the lunch program, or how they spend money on special education, or all of that, we would get a letter back saying that we don't have the power to request that information. Then we would end up in a courtroom, and I think a judge would say that we can't show them the authority for this information request. So although we are able to engage in the normal annual audit of the School District and to ask questions over test categories, if it gets into a position where it's going to be litigation or a court fight, which is, we're always thinking about that when we get into these fights, I don't really have a leg to stand on when I try to collect the detailed information that would go into that. Jerry, do you have anything that you would help us on this?
No, I think you-
State your name for the record.
Jerry Machula, Deputy City Controller. I think the Controller has pretty much hit it accurately. To the extent, our audit work primarily covers the audit of the School District's financial statements. If there are any operational issues, and for example, when you're doing a financial audit, you may very well see something that for purposes of the financial statements, it's presented correctly, but you may question it as to, did they use this money efficiently, effectively? And as soon as we start to cross that line, we question how effective or how efficiently they use the money, they start to give us a hard time.
If I may, I mean certainly it would be a help if the state were to specifically amend the takeover law to give us audit authority. We have consistently shown a very strong interest in the operations of the School District, and for example, we have done several series of reviews of charter school, charter school operations, charter school financing. And in fact, I think we were, one time, we had a draft of legislation in Harrisburg that would have authorized the Philadelphia Controller to do the monitoring of charter schools, which the School District Office has only had six employees dedicated to. We've had more resources dedicated to it. So we have a strong commitment and interest, and we have, for many years, we were critics of inefficiency and poor financial management in the School District. That would be a very welcome tool in enabling us to be, I mean, the School District has basically become a full partner with the city government in terms of budgeting now.
Yeah, I would hope that we, with the change in administration, that we'd have, and maybe we will, a much more cooperative relationship with the SRC. Change in leadership, not necessarily referencing the individual, but the fact that the leadership was appointed by the Democratic governor, person of that, has shown a willingness to be very cooperative with the City of Philadelphia. So I would hope that we can be in a position, and I know we probably should have some level of an ability to follow the money, so to speak, since we are on an annual basis are given the opportunity to authorize a significantly increasing amount of taxes without any wherewithal to quote-unquote "follow the money." So I hope that not only are you on your side, you have a much more cooperative relationship but on our side, that we can have a little more input in terms of how that money is actually spent. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to come back on the camera question. I'm going to recognize Councilman Jones right now.
Thank you, Mr. Controller. How were you this fine year?
So far, as of April 22nd, 21st, pretty well. First third of the year is okay.
I always mention that I enjoy reading your synopsises of audits and how you go through them. It helps us in our budget preparation. And I was wondering if indeed we've recently moved DHS to a COO system, and have you had an opportunity to go through DHS and its system, not in a negative way, but just to assess if we are moving in the right direction, if we are meeting our financial objectives, if we are meeting our obligations to the young people? Have we done one for that department in particular?
Good morning, Councilman. Bill Rubin, First Deputy Controller. I did speak with Stacy last night. She did give me an idea of some of the issues that you're looking at. We prepared some things. We're going to meet with her as soon as we're done and go through that. Jerry does do a lot of audits that are considered performance audits. We can certainly put that in as something that we would look at in the future, but it is part of our annual audit that he puts through. They send over their own audits that they have done. They have to prove to our department that they've had those audits done, and then it's part of the checklist that Jerry goes through when he does that departmental audit. So we are looking at it, but we can look further into it.
We wanted to make sure that that was on the record, but we are not going into this in a sense of to try to find a gotcha moment. The question becomes, this is such a sizable investment, such a new direction for our city, impacting such a vulnerable community, that we want to make sure that we're moving in the right pace. And finally, we have a year under this new system, so that we have something to measure, both in the performance end, but also in the financial, and are the taxpayers saving money going into a direction like this? We've had an opportunity to go out and personally visit some of the COOs, and they seem to be good people, but I don't know what that means by way of your analysis, what that means by way of program delivery, and I would be, as one councilperson, interested in seeing if the experiment, the great experiment, is moving in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman, all right, thank you. Hey, Councilman. Ms. Buckowitz, what's your latest analysis on the city's video surveillance systems and the conditions?
I think it's several years old, but our conclusion at the time was that the, I think we found that about a third of the cameras were not functional. And in fact, as I recall, that controversy occurred the weekend before the collapse of 22nd and Market Street. So there was, I mean, the mayor called us liars, said that we hadn't actually evaluated it, and took the media on a tour of the Operations Center in which a lot of great video from SEPTA's cameras were interspersed with city cameras and really did not address, and then they started arguing, how many cameras did we actually look at? And then all of that was just swept away by the huge disaster of 22nd and Market. But we have not, I think we looked at it twice. We looked at the video cameras twice, the findings the second time, validated the findings the first time. I think there have been news reports about shootings and things happening right under the location where some of these cameras are supposedly located. We were told that if there's a blue light flashing, that the camera's working. We found that that was not true. As you recall, we found that there were holes in the cameras, that they would get filled up with rainwater, that they were blurry. In fact, in that same week that I just referenced, the administration tried to show a video to rebut our findings, and all you could see was a police officer in a white shirt with his hand out, shooting at someone. It was almost impossible, at least on TV, to distinguish faces or anything else that would have been really useful in an operational sense. So I think that case has been made.
Okay. I asked that question, a number of members visited Camden yesterday, look at the new Shot Spotter program, and the reason that it's successful is because the availability of cameras in proximity to the microphone, which is essentially the device that records gunshots. And if in fact we move aggressively towards implementing that program, which I think, I think the members that were there yesterday would probably agree, that it's something that we need to look at very seriously. It only works if you have a significant number of cameras in proximity to that location because there is actually real-time responses where the gunshot goes off, cameras immediately pan towards that location, and you have people watching the videos so you can see the direction of the potential perpetrator. So if in fact you have an opportunity to look at some possible locations or get a sense of where we are with our camera system, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Current, more up-to-date information.
And I think, as you pointed out, Mr. President, the, one of the problems was nobody's watching the video in Philadelphia as it happens anyway.
Right.
I mean, citizens were assured that we could afford to have a lower level of police manpower because you'd have the greater efficiency of the technology, and really, the practice is to just look at the video after an incident happens to see if you can identify perpetrators rather than to see whether there's a real-time situation where you can deploy added force and maybe save somebody's life.
All right. Okay, sir. You were actually next. I was getting ready to-
Sure.
I was-
I defer to you, Mr. President, to finish your line of questions.
Yeah, because you're next.
I'll wait, sir.
Took my train of thought. Okay, yeah, if you can find that out for us, because, you know, we want to look at that in a very aggressive way, but it only works if the cameras in fact work. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President.
You're welcome, sir.
I wanted to offer additional information regarding your answer, your question regarding the cameras. In the Second District, we do have a real live, we have a, the police real-time crime center, where, I don't know how many cameras are plugged into their system, but it's 24/7, and we possibly could take a tour. We're talking about expanding its operation right now because, right now, we can look at Broad and Allegheny and see what's going on prior to an incident taking place from the real-time call center. And so, in some capacity, as we look at expanding it, I would think that the camera technology would be used to be proactive as well, because from that particular real-time call center, you have a representative from Delaware County Police, New Jersey State Police, ATF, alcohol tobacco firearms, DEA, all housed in one FBI, one crime center. And so I'm quite sure if they are monitoring the various locations, and you will see something about to happen, they can immediately call the 22nd Police District or the 17th and say, hey, listen, someone's lurking around somebody's car, or we see somebody like throwing some suspicions in their pocket, get the cops out there like immediately. And so I would like to take you on a tour, or anyone else who would like to see it, to see how the cameras can also work in conjunction with the initiative that you went to take a look at yesterday regarding spot shooting.
Yeah, well, I'd be happy to take you up on that. That's really encouraging.
When you see this facility though, it's like awesome, like if a bomb dropped, this is probably where you want to be at, because it's like everything going on in one, and the Chairman of Public Safety, he went down there with me as well, with a couple other council members, and it's probably a jewel that we have, and it's probably a quiet secret here in the City of Philadelphia, but it's definitely state-of-the-art.
Well, it's not a secret anymore.
No.
But I commend you for, that's really encouraging to hear something positive going.
I had a question, and I, you know, I say, you know, I always nod to the mayor for like, that's primarily one of his, you know, pet projects that he kind of focused on from a public safety crime aspect, but I'm glad it's in the Second District. My question, you came up with a very interesting report and study on the Department of Recreation Advisory Councils, and how they operate finances and how they go about doing their day-to-day business, overseeing our various recreation centers and parks throughout the city. So can you just elaborate on what actually your findings of that report, your recommendations in terms of how you think we need to move forward on the city side to kind of rein in the advisory councils that operate throughout the city?
Well, we really focused on two recreation centers, and at Fox Chase, there were major problems in that the treasurer had carte blanche over the checkbook. She was the only signer on checks. She signed checks payable to herself, and she had the bank statements and canceled checks mailed directly to her home. And she also refused to grant access to data on her computer. I think she had the computer at home as well. In addition, the Fox Chase Advisory Council paid about $31,000 to four advisory council officers and to four Recreation Center employees, a practice which the Recreation Manual expressly prohibits. Now, there was some debate about that because the Advisory Council said that they got recreation employees to work on weekends and overtime, but the policy of the charter and city law has been pretty consistent. You work for the city, you work for the city, you have one master, you got one paycheck, and these kinds of side deals are prohibited.
Did you say one master?
That, it sure sounded like that, but that had to have been an error.
Okay. I thought it was that one boss or one employee.
Yeah, that's probably better. At vote, there were blank checks that were being pre-signed by advisory council officers. In that case, they would only get one signature instead of two, and there was no supporting documentation, no invoices, contracts, vouchers, et cetera.
So how would, what's your recommendations in terms of how we clean up, how we can actually address these issues? Because I think the advisory councils are, in some aspects, totally separate from the Department of Recreation. I think, so I can't just immediately introduce a bill and say, here's how all the advisory councils shall operate here in the City of Philadelphia, because somehow there's a separation between the two. So how would we address-
Yeah, that was, there was a debate about whether we could even audit it for those purposes. And the answer is that the manual has an effect served as the Bible for the advisory councils. So the advisory councils are able to function because they hold themselves out to the world as having a relationship with the Recreation Department. So the Recreation Department has a rule that says, in order to function, in order to have this relationship with us, you must comply with the following requirements, such as having double signatures, such as making your books open for audit, such as how they're going to conduct an election for members of the advisory council in the neighborhood, who gets to participate, how that all gets scheduled. I think that that would be addressed. I'm not sure that you can do it by ordinance, but I think that you could do it by regulation in the Recreation Department.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Buckowitz.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
Good, Councilman. Good, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick couple of questions. Last year, you talked about the 1,200 vacant properties that you took a look at. Is there any, with LNI and the boarding up and- the boarding up and things like that, has there been clean and sealed? Has there been an update to that information? Have we made progress with City Council? And the city has made a substantial investment with new technology, new workforce, and wanted to find out if we've made any headway with that.
Well, as you probably know, we're in a very extensive review of licenses and inspections practices that covers a number of subjects, including delays and failures to comply with time requirements on the taking down of imminently dangerous structures. So part of that is a review of clean and sealed buildings. We have, as I indicated before, served about three or four extensive subpoenas. There's an awful lot of data being reviewed and called through. The Law Department right now is going through some of it to determine after, I guess it's been more than 30 days, after 30 days, what they can and can't give us. So it's going to be, it's going to be a series of months before we are able to issue a report on that.
We put $3 million in the prior year, and then, I don't know how much last year, to try to shore those inspections up. So it would be interesting for us to evaluate our return on investment. There was an article today in the paper talking about those changes being underway, and I just wanted to know if your office had a chance to quantify some of those gains. And so, I'll wait on that. The other question, following up back with Councilman Johnson and then Councilman Clark, is I would be interested in looking at the cameras in a different way, because in Baltimore, I think it was 25% reduction in crime in the areas that the cameras were in. I don't know if anyone has quantified what they've actually meant to crime prevention, crime reduction, apprehension of criminals. There were a couple of cases last year. One was the abduction, that heinous abduction of a young lady in Germantown. And the only way they found out was through a camera. It wasn't a camera for, for the city, but it was camera technology. So obviously, it has a role to play in crime prevention and apprehension. And the other thing is, to look at other cities where they do have live monitors, which is, I think, if I may be so bold as to say the President's pet peeve, that they actually have eyes on, even though I would, I would say our apparatus down in South Philly is every bit as good or maybe better. The key component is someone actually observing a particular terrain. They call it virtual patrolling. And then having particularly a retired officer, or someone who has desk duty, to be able to actually know that terrain, know the perpetrators, know some of the methods of operation, to be able to add to the boots on the ground, and be able, with a handheld, be able to give them real-time information. They could be a block or two away and say that suspect A has just entered the area, suspect B has just approached him for a transaction, and we've, we've seen the transaction, we've memorialized it on tape, go in and I'm going to tell you what pocket he got in. So I mean, that, that, so Baltimore and other cities that use that particular eyes in the sky and boots on the ground partnership, I would be interested in us measuring what that could mean as a force multiplier, a reduction in actual crime, and more importantly, more importantly, preventing crimes. I mean, I think that's where you get your bonus points from, actually getting to a situation before it actually occurs, as opposed to memorializing it after it happens.
Well, this council really has taken a heroic role in both focusing on the technology issues that you're referencing on crime prevention, and in finally putting in substantial resources in LNI to do what they were making pretend they were doing before. I would take this moment to point out that one of the issues that we had with the cameras was that the city had absolutely no maintenance or response plan. It takes up to five days for the city to fix a camera. In Baltimore, they have a strict 24-hour, if you're going to put confidence, people are going to be walking on the streets figuring that that camera is providing security. The criminals in the area have to not think it's a joke. And it's very similar to the requirement that LNI be serious about tearing down a building that's going to fall down in 24 hours within, within the state of time. Same thing should be done on maintenance and repair of our video cameras. But you have staked out a visionary path, and you've found real-world examples that are very nearby. I mean, anytime that Camden is able to lead the way for Philadelphia, it's somewhat embarrassing.
It was humbling. It wasn't embarrassing, but it was humbling. So I applaud our president for being visionary, not just now, but you and former Mayor Street embarked upon this with a RFP to community where in the leasing way, way back before it was popular. So I want to put that on the record, that it was your vision. I remember, I remember some of the first beta testing cameras. And so, we've come a long way, and I think we have a bit further to go. But the upside potential of this thing is extraordinary. So stay on it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. And just for the record, I don't want, speaking from a personal
perspective, to people to construe this issue with respect to ShotSpotter or any other new technology to be morphed into a council versus administration versus police. We're just simply, again, prepared to have a true partnership, because we are already appropriating entity within the government to provide the support for any new technology that enhances our ability to deter crime. There are parts in my district, and I'm sure the other, the members here's districts, where there are literally a gunshot, a minimal of a gunshot a night. Nobody gets hit. And people, unfortunately, because of the frequency of the gunshots, people just kind of shrug it off, you know, oh, well. And it never gets reported. But we're talking about a technology can actually report a gunshot, so we have a real sense of how many people are actually shooting, and actually be in a position to let people know that we have this detection system, that if you shoot, I don't care if you hit them or not, we're going to find you, we're going to track you down. So that's all we're trying to do. And I just want to say that, you know, we as a true partner with the Philadelphia Police, because we love our police, we want to make sure that they have all the tools necessary to be able to deter crime in whatever capacity. There are no other questions at this time. Thank you very much, Mr. Buckwoods.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Council President Clark and members of City Council. I am David Perry, Commissioner of the Streets Department. I am joined today by Deputy Commissioners Donald Carlton, Michael Carroll, and Christopher Newman. We are here to present testimony on behalf of the department's proposed fiscal year 2016 operating budget. We request a general fund appropriation of $125,406,720, and an all-funds appropriation of $195,86,720. This budget request allows the department to accomplish our mission of providing clean, green, and safe streets. Streets Department employees have done a remarkable job accomplishing the department's mission this current fiscal year, despite the challenges posed by a second consecutive severe winter and a shortage of operable trash compactors. Our sanitation division has collected 250,000 tons of curbside trash through the first two quarters of this fiscal year, and has maintained the city's curbside recycling rate and recycling tonnage at historically high levels, despite significant changes in the composition of the recycling stream. In early April, the sanitation division successfully completed the eighth annual Philly Spring Cleanup, which featured a record number of participants and a record number of projects. Sanitation Division's Citywide Cleaning Unit continues to provide exceptional cleaning services for the city's world-class outdoor public events, while also supporting local neighborhood cleaning projects throughout the city. Sanitation Division's unique Philadelphia More Beautiful Committee effectively supports a growing network of impassioned block captains who have increased in number to over 9,000 community leaders citywide. In an effort to provide neighborhoods with safe and convenient access to legally dispose of excess trash, yard waste, tires, furniture, appliances, electronics, and recycling, the sanitation division has opened two new convenience centers this fiscal year, where residents can easily dispose of these materials and products. Our Transportation Division continues along multiple paths to improve the city's complex transportation network, with a primary goal of improving safety and access for all users of the public right of way. The Transportation Division has implemented a complete streets approach to projects, with an emphasis on upgrading transit corridors, expanding the bicycle network, improving pedestrian facilities, and effectively managing the traffic flow. With these objectives in mind, we are on schedule to open the city's first traffic operations center this September, which will provide the city with the state-of-the-art traffic control and management system. We also to continue to modernize city-owned street and alley lighting systems with cleaner, brighter, more energy-efficient LED technology. In terms of maintaining the city's roads, the department has reached an agreement this year with advocacy groups to focus the reconstruction of curb ramps, the street crossings that have the highest need and highest pedestrian counts. This, the resulting pilot program will enable the Streets Department to more effectively build out the city's curb ramp network, while simultaneously more than doubling the number of miles of local city streets that will be conventionally repaved. Streets Department as a whole, and in partnership with other city departments and agencies, including Parks and Recreation, Water, Clip, Fleet Management, and the Philadelphia Parking Authority, successfully provided snow and ice removal services during a second consecutive harsh and destructive winter season that featured 18 snow and ice events. Over an extremely challenging 16-month period, Streets Department employees responded to a record 37 winter weather events and their aftermath, while continuing to deliver critical public services to the citizens of Philadelphia. We thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today. The deputy staff and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just have a couple of quick questions. And one, the, just real quickly, Broad Street, North Broad Lights, Avenue of the Art North Broad, the lights along the median, where are we at in terms of scheduling?
We will, we'll get you to the schedule for the completion of that project that is in construction and has been in construction for a period of time. Staff will probably be able to pass up to me the, the current completion schedule.
The main issue, I think, is that we're working on figuring out the liability issues associated with the lights. So the contractor's currently on hold as far as the work progressing until we work these issues out.
Well, I don't...
I'm sorry. My name's Mike Carroll. I'm the Deputy Commissioner for Transportation and Streets Department.
You say it's on hold, because I'm with, there's a log jam every morning on Broad Street on my way to work. I run into a log jam where they're actually working, looked like some sort of trenching on the street, on the lights. So there's something going on. You say it's on hold?
The, the progress in getting the work done for the lights put up and finishing their job, there may be some work that we need to do in order to fix the maintenance and protection of traffic, and we can look into that.
Okay. All right. So when you say liability, bottom line is, we're concerned about people running into the standards? Is that it?
Yeah. And the configure, the configuration of the lights is somewhat unusual. It's a project that was developed and adopted by the Streets Department. We're trying to figure out a way that we can get those taken in by the city and maintained by the city in a manner that's consistent with our standards.
Okay. Mattresses. Have we gotten a handle on that? Mattresses, I know there was a change to the collection process because of the bed bug phenomenon, and people were just dropping mattresses everywhere because they didn't want to get their bags or the coverage was understanding. The Street Department adopted a policy that they would not collect a mattress unless they were encased in some sort of a plastic or whatever that was. Can you tell me where we are with that? Because I still see them nuts.
It doesn't seem like as many, but I still see a lot of mattresses discarded across the city.
Good morning. I'm Deputy Street Commissioner Donald Carlton, in charge of sanitation. Council President, yes. Initially, in 2013, when we introduced this regulation, we did a two-week, a two-month period where we did warnings for residents who did not comply. And in February, we began citing residents who didn't comply. But from a division standpoint, we tried to address it from numerous ways, because, as you said, initially, it was an issue. We had people dumping them on lots. We had individuals just dumping them anywhere because there was no compliance. And to avoid the citation, you just didn't want it in front of your property. But what we've done as a division, we've taken a three-step approach where we are identifying it. We have our managers then inspecting it. And if it is infested, we will have crews with, they will don protective uniform to collect it. But if it's not infested, then we'll have the normal crews collect it. So we've definitely seen a decrease in the amount of illegally dumped mattresses over the past year from when we first started this, this regulation.
What's causing the decrease?
Well, we're actually servicing them, and we're ensuring that...
So you're removing them? So people are still dumping? It's just that you now have the ability to remove them?
It's not as, I'll be honest, Council President, it's not even as many being dumped. I believe initially, individuals kind of resisted as whenever there's a change. But we're seeing a lot more individuals have them in the bags.
Okay.
And also, they're actually just wrapping them in plastic. So we encourage our crews, even if it's not a bag that was brought from Walmart or one of the other chain stores, if it's wrapped, take it.
Okay. More compliance.
Yes.
All right. Kind of like the recycling.
Yes.
There's a lot of resistance early on in that. I must say, I was a little late in getting on board, but I got a couple of warnings, and I said, you know what, I better comply.
Yes.
If I'm not compliant, so probably be in the newspaper. Real quick, the, I see that you're, fortunately, we're getting a significant amount of revenue as a result of these, these state-authorized gas tax for street paving. Are we using any more creative measures, or are we just going to use the continued method of street repaving in terms of materials? And I ask that because I know at one point in time, there was this discussion about tires, recycling tires for street paving. And so I guess it's a two-part question. One, are we looking at more creative ways of repaving since we have additional dollars? And two, is that, did that technology actually pan out with respect to recycling of tires? Because we're actually now starting to see an onset of tire dumping again. And I found out...
I must say, I was a little late in, in getting on board, but I got a couple of warnings and I said, you know what, I better comply.
Yes.
My non-compliance will probably be in the newspaper. Um, real quick, the, I see that you're, uh, fortunately, we're getting a significant amount of revenue as a result of these, these state authorized gas tax for street paving. Uh, are we using any more creative measures or are we just going to use the continued method of street repaving, uh, in terms of materials? And I ask that because I know at one point in time, there was this discussion about tires, um, recycling tires for street paving. And so I guess it's a two-part question. One, are we looking at more creative ways of repaving since we have additional dollars? And two, is that, did that technology actually pan out with respect to recycling of tires? Because we're actually now starting to see an onset of tire dumping again and, uh, since I found out we were trying to do something with that, but we found out that that's state, state regulated in terms of this disposition of used tires.
All right, there's a, a answer to a couple of your, your questions in there. Uh, the new state gas tax money, we are projecting that out several years to be able to be used for conventional repaving in Philadelphia. That's the most effective way of providing the city with, with a safe and durable roadway network. Uh, we are considering and have met with a supplier to pilot, uh, a, a program using recycled rubber for asphalt, but, uh, the use of that product is still in its infancy in northern states in the, uh, United States. It is in use in, in some warmer climates, but it is not in widespread use as of yet in, uh, colder weather areas such as, uh, as Philadelphia. So, um, the gas tax money, uh, that, that we are projecting increases over the next several years, uh, we would like that exclusively to increase our, the number of miles of, uh, street repaving that we can do. Uh, we have tried various alternate repaving methods, including, uh, thin overlays and, um, uh, and, and other methods, uh, and we found that they really do not, uh, hold up as well as expected and that, uh, there's really no good substitute at this point, uh, for using conventional, uh, paving, um, as the, uh, proper way to, uh, restore and maintain city streets.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, uh, I'd just like to, um, thank you. I don't know if this happened as a result of the conversation we had a couple, a couple of budget cycles ago about the placement of, uh, the ramps, uh, handicap ramps and I was talking about in the other states, they were actually targeting locations that had, uh, healthcare facilities. Uh, that was the primary focus of the, um, installation of those ramps because of the need. And you talked about using pedestrian counts as it relates to, um, accessible ramps. Uh, thank you for adopting that program as, you know, personally, you know, you have, I have a couple of people in my family that have, uh, challenges with respects to, uh, dealing with those ramps and, uh, a couple of years ago, trying to navigate the streets in the city of Philadelphia was somewhat challenging. So thank you. Thank you for, uh, moving towards that process.
You're welcome. It's a far more effective and efficient way to build out the curb ramp network is to identify locations with high pedestrian counts and locations where there, there is a definitive need. Uh, we'd rather do it that way than just, um, uh, hook up, um, doing ramp, uh, installation just because we happen to be paving a random street.
Yeah, yeah, actually, I saw that, there was paving of the street that had two houses on it and they actually put ramps on it as a result of that old program. Didn't make a lot of sense, but, you know, but thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, first and foremost, I just want to publicly, um, acknowledge the work of the Streets Department, starting off with the leadership at the top, which is the Commissioner and, and his surrounding supporting cast and team, um, and the special mention to Donald Carlton, only for the simple fact that every time, uh, my office call, the Streets Department, uh, regarding issues and concerns in the Second Councilmatic District, y'all are always responsive, y'all are always professional. Uh, we have a very huge city and there's a lot of issues that needs to be addressed under the Streets Department, but I do thank you for y'all responding and, and working with us in addressing those day-to-day issues. And the reason why I left the state, I was to come to City Council to serve as a councilman in the city of Philadelphia, a city in which I love, is because City Hall is where, and City Council is where the rubber meets the road. So rabbits dealing with potholes, rabbits, um, helping pack the park, get snow removal or, um, sending the cleaning truck down Point Freeze Avenue or, or working on getting alleyways, click, I've always been supportive of our efforts and so, um, I mean, text Donald like eleven-thirty in the night, said about an issue constituents calling me for. So for the whole team, first and foremost, I just want to say thank you for your service to the city. As first, and the taxpayers should be proud because at least in the second district, y'all are working. I just want to update on a couple of things. Uh, one, Philadelphia Futures Program, I just love this program. Um, can y'all give us an update, I, I, an idea of, uh, the status of the program? I mean, are young men participating? Uh, what are we going to do to keep this program, uh, moving forward regardless of whoever's in the next administration? It's a outstanding program that takes young men off the corner, gets them involved in something that's positive and I think it's one of those little, um, quiet programs that's often talked about that the mayor implemented specifically as a way to address the issue of, uh, youth violence by putting young men to work. So can you?
Yeah, we love the, uh, Future Track Program. Um, as you know, it speaks to the thematic goal of closing the income gap, uh, provides , uh, eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds with, uh, life skills and job training opportunities and, uh, real-life, uh, job skills, and it also, uh, provides a community which much, with much-needed services. Uh, one hundred and ninety-eight, uh, individuals have completed the program since two thousand and thirteen, eighty are currently working in the program. Uh, this year, we provided an enhancement to that program in which we, um, allocated five of the spots for individuals, um, that, um, had, uh, learning, uh, that were in the autistic community so that we can give, uh, those folks an opportunity to get real-life, uh, job skills and, uh, and experience. Um, we followed that Future Track Program last year with a program we called Survey the Future, and, uh, it didn't get too much publicity, but I'm very proud of that program. Our Survey Bureau Manager Frank Morelli put the program together and what he was able to do, we tested five of the Future Track, uh, employees and found those that had the highest math skill levels. We then made arrangements with, um, with the, with, uh, HR to provide those five individuals with temporary, um, uh, jobs with the city of Philadelphia. So they were hired on as trainees for a limited period of time. And what Frank Morelli from our Survey Bureau was able to do, he provided them with intense training on higher-level math skills such as trigonometry and in the skills you need to become a surveyor. So, um, after about six months, the engineering aid examination came out and, and I'm very proud to say that the five individuals that, that we trained came out, one, two, three, five, and six on the engineering aid examination, and they are now all permanent city employees. So they, they went from a temporary job program into a temporary, um, a position with the city, city of Philadelphia, and now, uh, they have, uh, permanent, uh, positions, civil service positions with, uh, an uphill potential that is unlimited. So we're very proud of that program. We think it's something that's scalable and reproducible in other, um, areas in city government. So Future Track Program has been nothing but a success for us. Uh, we will be, uh, uh, we are in the middle of the, uh, of the current, uh, program and, and we'll have a, another round of, uh, of, of, uh, trainees, uh, coming up afterwards.
Okay. All right, just keep me abreast and, and, Chairman of Public Safety, Councilman Jones, and obviously, you aware of the program?
We, um, over the last couple of years have challenged each department to do that.
Yes.
Kind of school to work, school to a career, uh, as it's supposed to school to prison. But I must say, uh, they have stepped up in such a way, um, that it is a, it is a blueprint for other departments, whether it's the Water Department or others.
Water Department.
To be able to do that. I, I mean, we, we, you know, from time to time, council people kind of pile on when you don't do something right, but I'm very glad that, uh, Councilman Johnson is recognizing and highlighting something that you're doing extraordinarily well.
Thank you.
Yes, and just wrapping up, what's, what's special about the program, because every, is that every night, and, and the Council, Councilman Jones, we call each other because both of our districts, probably every other evening, we either get a shooting or homicide. So we kind of like hoping it's not his district when we turn the news, and I'm hoping it's not my district when we turn on the news. But it's always inspiring, um, and I can't speak for everybody, I speak for Kirk myself. Like, I grew up in Point Freeze. I grew up, like, in the neighborhood around, like, regular guys where half of my friends are dead, the other half are in jail, maybe the rest are still hanging on the corner. And when you see ten, twenty young men come down the street with their blue uniforms on, they're professional, they're not, um, acting out in the neighborhood and they're working, see, when we talk about a real serious conversation about crime and violence, if a young man is working during the day, he's too tired to come out and hang on the corner. If he have a job, he's not trying to sell drugs because he's working already and so hopefully we'll step up as a city and I'm going to refocus my priority to specifically begin looking at how do we put more of our money in the budget to make these programs go to scale? The Councilman challenged the Water Department to do the same type of program that I met with them about yesterday, where you have young people, uh, working, building a career from school, from going from school and, and focusing on a career. And so I just think at some point in time, um, as a city, we got to sit back and say, hold up, what are we seriously going to do to help these young men, um, focus on getting a job and not picking up a gun? And as programs like that, that's an example that we're going to begin to start taking a real hard look at. Let's put our money where our mouth is and we really think we're about addressing the issue of crime and violence besides just locking everyone up. So thank you for your leadership and I just want to thank you and your team publicly because when things go wrong, we give you a call, but we need to acknowledge we are doing good work and I'm just, uh, wanted to stop my schedule today and like give y'all, uh, y'all kudos publicly. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I was going to give you some accolades because I'm next, but I'm going to yield to council members that have not had an opportunity, I'll, I'll save it for a little later. Um, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you very much. I'll only be a moment, I wanted to thank, uh, this department as well. We have myriad things on the fire, but, uh, but we're working them through and we want to say thank you all for your assistance and cooperation.
You're welcome, Councilwoman.
When, when there's a snow event, it's like, who do you call? And it isn't Ghostbusters, so we call you. Uh, Chair now recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, uh, Chairman, and thank you for yielding your time.
No problem.
Leadership. All right, good, uh, good morning.
Good morning.
I really just have one question, uh, um, and it's just, really just kind of exploring, so, um, the pothole situation, um, and, and there are, you know, significant number of potholes, I understand that. And, uh, I was meeting with a, a group of motorcycle riders and they kind of alerted me to the fact that even more than cars, they face a lot of, uh, safety issues because of the potholes and, um, you know, so it was explained to them that there has to be five consistent days of a certain temperature before the state at least can get out to do the, the potholes. And, uh, the, the riders or drivers, they don't really distinguish city, state, federal roads, it's just roads. Um, so I understand that there is a kind of a coordination between the, the city, state, and federal, um, uh, departments that deal with, uh, repairing potholes, is that, is that correct?
Yes, the, the, there's three main entities that repair potholes in the city of Philadelphia, Streets Department, Pendote, and SEPTA.
Okay. And so, uh, I've asked this before, but I'm, I'm very curious as I continue to read about improvements in infrared technology for pothole repair. Um, is the Streets Department, um, investigating or planning to, um, at any time do infrared, uh, pothole repair?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we do have that equipment and we do use it. Uh, we find, however, that using, um, equipment known as a pothole killer, um, gets the job done in a much quicker manner than using the infrared technology, but we do have that and we do use it.
Okay, so what is the difference between infrared, um, technology and pothole killer?
Yeah, just, just on a basic level, uh, the infrared technology requires more of a startup to it. So if we have a street, a, a block length where we know that there's a lot of potholes on it, we can start it up, go through that time and process, and it's more efficient to use that along the whole length, getting all those potholes along the block. But if you have potholes that are spread out, uh, a large distance away from each other, uh, it's just more efficient to use the pothole killer.
So let me tell you what I've read and, you know, I'm not saying it's true, but, uh, but I want to check with you because you, you, you're actually on the ground. So what I understand is that the infrared, uh, repair is in high demand in Europe and Asia. It saves money, uses less labor and equipment, and is more green, one-seventh the carbon footprint of a traditional repair and permanently repairs the pothole. Technology is U.S., uh, technology from Man- Manchester, New Hampshire. It requires two men, one truck, and takes fifteen minutes to repair a pothole, um, and it costs about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per pothole. So to outfit a new truck, significant investment of one-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. Uh, but the traditional pothole repair is a six-man crew, uh, heavy equipment, and work can slow down for a significant period of time as lanes are closed. And, and, and the reason I bring it up is because the, the key different appears to me to be that, um, they don't need to wait for warmer weather, that when a pothole appears in cold weather, they can actually repair the pothole then and there, and so the crews would be working, uh, in longer periods of time in the different seasons so that the potholes don't sit there and cause damage to cars and vehicles and, and other things, that when the pothole appears, you could fill it in cold weather and keep moving around so that your crew is going around repairing potholes as they, as they appear. Um, is that, is that, um, your experience or, or ha- ha- what has your experience been in this, in this, with this technology?
Well, uh, it sounds to me like you've got information about newer technology as far as the infrared.
It's new technology, it's two thousand and fourteen.
So we'll be happy to receive that information from you and evaluate it. There are a few other new techniques that we're looking at as well. We're always looking for ways to do our business a little bit better. Um, it is important to realize, though, that there is a capital investment involved and so that's the real hurdle for us in terms of taking on new ways of doing things.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Perfect timing, Councilman Peckel. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good, good afternoon, whatever time it is. Thank you guys for coming in and again, I want to reiterate, Councilman Johnson and Councilman Jones has said about how cooperative the Streets Department has been in working with our office. Again, we inundate them with calls and emails and, and just constant concerns and that, and it's always a, a response that we get. If the response is not within ten minutes, it's within, within that day. And, and there's also somebody that goes out and checks it. So I want to, I really want to commend the Streets Department, all the staff, uh, for everything from potholes to trash and, and, and whatnot. My, my question is, on the, um, we seem to get a lot of concerns with residents who have gullies in their streets where water doesn't seem to get to the sewer line. And sometimes it's maybe a little bit after a street has been repaved, sometimes it's longer. What is the process to fix those gullies and, and sometimes it's a little more work than, than just a, a patch? Um, if somebody has those type of concerns, what is the process to try to get that fixed where the water would then flow eventually down to the sewers?
Generally, when we, we pave a street, we'll do it in such a manner that, that we can redirect the stormwater flow so that it, uh, so there's no low spots in the street. Uh, on occasion, if the, uh, there was an issue with how the street was repaved, uh, we simply have to go back and redo it. There's also some cases in the city in which there may not be enough stormwater drains on a particular street, and the Water Department has a program called Fix the Flood in which, uh, the Water Department works with the Streets Department and we look for solutions to areas that have chronic flooding problems. Um, it sounds like in the, in the, uh, for instance, that you gave us, that it probably was maybe not the best paving operation and probably needs to be redone, uh, as opposed to a chronic flooding problem in the particular neighborhood.
What, what would be then the, I guess, priority on that? I mean, obviously, we're redoing streets and then if we get those concerns or complaints in, we get them over to you, would that would then become, go back on the street list to get repaved or how would that work? Would that just be a repair?
Yeah, if, if we did a, a recent repaving operation and it, uh, was, was, was not acceptable, uh, we would put that back to the top of the list to go back out again and, uh, have it done correctly.
Otherwise, then we would wait till the street gets redone to try to fix the gullies or those puddles that form when we have storms and some of them are worse than others, but, um, if the, if- But, um, if, if it isn't something that needs to drain, they would just wait till the next go around to get that street and able for the water to go down to the storm drains.
Yeah, that, that's correct. Um, I mean, we do have an issue in Philadelphia, especially in, uh, uh, towards the river with a lot of low-lying, flat areas and no matter how well you do the paving, uh, some streets are just difficult to drain because they do not have the, enough of a pitch for, uh, water to, uh, to drain off in a, uh, in a, in a quick, uh, manner.
All right. Thank you very much and again, thank you all for, for streets and, and transportation of your, uh, I guess your efforts and your really response to, to our offices and getting things done. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
We thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and it's so true. I mean, when, you know, you guys have been responsive and half of the time when, we don't even count the times I drag your staff out to community meetings and, um, they stand shoulder to shoulder with us and get beat up a little bit, uh, but we appreciate it and, uh, we, we view, view you as partners because of it. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A couple of things, um, and I, I, I'm gonna go back to O after I ask a few questions. And my, my questions relate to B, B and B, the three Bs. Bike lanes, bridges, and busted equipment. And so we're going to start with my three Bs and, um, let's go with, um, busted equipment. According to your testimony, uh, some of your aging equipment is between 10 and 18 years old. The fleet is impacted by that, refuse collection is impacted by that. How are we addressing your aging fleet and rotating some of them out and then bringing some of them in? And in light of, uh, Councilman O's question about using new technology, we have to invest anyway, is this an appropriate time for such a investment in new types of technology?
The, the main impact of, uh, our, our vehicle, uh, problem has, has been with our trash compactors. And, uh, I'm very happy to report that in the city's capital program, starting with next year, there is a line item in the city's capital program specifically earmarked for Streets Department vehicles. There's $7 million a year, it's projected out for the out years in the capital program and that will ensure that we can replace one-eighth of our trash compactor fleet each year. Now, that's the recommended replacement schedule is that a trash compactor, uh, should last about eight years. So in other words, uh, each year we should replace one-eighth of our fleet. Uh, currently, uh, approximately one-third of our fleet is between 10 and 18 years old, which is causing our, uh, immediate problems with, uh, uh, with getting reliable equipment out on the street. Um, come this July 1st, we have 30 compactors that we will be receiving delivery on. So the problem that we've had over, uh, the last year and a half with, uh, trash compactors uh, should, uh, should be, uh, gone by, uh, this summer. On the highway side, uh, we also, uh, need to upgrade our equipment and, uh, one of the innovations that we are going to do is that all our highway, uh, dump trucks will be equipped when we purchase them, uh, with tanks for, uh, brining operations for winter, uh, storm, uh, response. Um, we need to be able to brine more streets in Philadelphia. Uh, we feel that's the most effective way of, uh, providing, um, a, a, uh, snow and ice response. It'll allow us to use, um, less salt to accomplish the same amount of ice melting on the street and, uh, that's one of the, uh, techniques and, and new technology, uh, that we're going to have our, uh, trucks equipped with, uh, right from the, the start when, when we purchase them.
So on the new equipment, you're adding brine versus salting, what do you do with the old equipment?
The, the old equipment, um, is, is managed by, uh, fleet management and at some point when it becomes beyond the point of being repairable, they relinquish it. Now, I'm not, I don't know whether they put it out to auction at that point. Some of the equipment they use for spare parts, uh, but the exact, how that equipment is, um, is actually taken off the city's inventory, fleet management would be in best position to answer that question.
We'll duly note that. Um, so, uh, the other B, I might add another B and make it four, bad weather. Um, what was your estimate for snow removal last year and what did we actually wind up
We, for, uh, snow removal operations, our, uh, our operation is supplemented with contractor equipment and, uh, we had $4 million was budgeted for, uh, contractor equipment last year and I know we exceeded that amount. We exceeded that amount by 1.2 million dollars.
That's, that's less than I thought, but okay. Can you do me a favor and provide to the Chair, um, the last four years estimates that you put in the budget and then the last four-year reality of expenditures, actual expense? And the reason I say that, and maybe it is in here, um, but the reason I say that is one or two things are true. Either we need to kind of estimate better in the front end, uh, and start to look at weather trends, uh, and, and if we're pres- if we're pleasantly surprised, that's one thing, but we need to be prepared and not to, not to say that we weren't, but a realistic estimate, um, in the front end so we know what we need to do by way of taxes, by way of appropriations. Okay?
Okay, and you want that for our snow removal operation?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, that'll help. Um, by way of bridges, um, there are 343 city-owned bridges in Philadelphia. 150 of them fall under PENDOT jurisdiction. Last year, the Controller's Report talked about bridges and, um, and, and a database prioritizing and tracking and maintaining, um, work orders, uh, for those bridges. How are we doing by way of city-owned bridges?
The, the major city-owned bridges, we, we now have them mapped on, uh, the city's website. So any member of the public or anyone that's interested can go to our website, click on a map and identify any bridge that is city-owned, uh, major, uh, bridge that is city-owned within the city limits. If you click on the, the actual bridge, it'll give you the, uh, technical information about that bridge. It'll give you the bridge number and also, uh, a link to filing a complaint, uh, should there be an issue with, uh, um, with a, uh, an unsafe condition with that particular bridge. So we are putting that bridge information out to the public, uh, so that we can, uh, effectively collect any kind of, uh, complaints or observations of, of any, uh, dangerous conditions that we might have with our, uh, city bridge inventory.
So on that website, you'll tell me if a particular bridge at 52nd and Jefferson has been, uh, inspected, how many times it's been inspected that year and how much maintenance has gone into that bridge?
No, it will, it will simply identify, um, who owns the bridge, what its, uh, span length is, what the clearance is under the bridge. It does not include the inspection records. All our major bridges are inspected every two years and we turn those inspection reports into PENDOT as required by the federal government.
Is there any way to include that in it or is that beyond your technical capabilities to talk about, for example, how much maintenance was put into a bridge? Is that doable?
Yeah, I, I think that would be beyond, uh, the ability of us to collect that and present it in a, um, in a, in a clear fashion on a publicly accessible website.
All right, so what I'd like to be provided to the Chair and to members of council by district is the number of city-owned bridges, um, and their maintenance schedule. Um, not so much when they were inspected, but when are you going to do something, paint it, uh, repair it, uh, replace it? And that's my understanding that the state and federal government does provide 90% of the expense of a replacement of a bridge, but provide us very little for the maintenance of a bridge. Is that true?
That's correct. We can, uh, apply for when there is federal money available and, uh, that money has been scarce over the past, uh, few years. But if we need to do a major bridge rehabilitation or replacement project, uh, we can apply for funding that would, uh, cover 95% of the cost of the bridge. Uh, the problem is that, um, the, the federal government, uh, needs, needs to open up and accept applications for, uh, that type of, uh, of, of project. And that funding has been scarce because of the inability to raise the federal gas tax since 1993. So nationwide, there's just, uh, not enough money out there, uh, to replace and to assist cities with, uh, maintenance, uh, or actually replacement of, uh, of, 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 uh, needed infrastructure. Uh, the federal government does not pay for what they would consider to be routine maintenance. So if there's a pothole, um, if there was, um, some other, uh, minor issue with a bridge, uh, that all gets, um, uh, paid for, uh, with local funding.
So, uh, on the mission of maintenance and, uh, bridges, uh, Councilman Johnson and I did hearings, uh, at his request on CSX and he's been a champion of, of that cause of dealing with safety issues. Um, when CA- CSX came in here, they talked about going forward, meeting with you guys to talk about bridge maintenance and safety, uh, transportation, but particularly the bridge safety. Has there been that meeting and what was the result of that meeting?
Yeah, we have met with, uh, CSX on, on several occasions. We, uh, have inspected, um, we, we've put together an internal program in which we do what we're calling, uh, underpass inspections. So we know of, uh, locations throughout the city in which another owner's bridge is passing over, um, a, a city street. So we will do a, an inspection, uh, from down below. It, it's not considered to be a, um, an official inspection or a legal inspection in terms of, uh, meeting their federal mandate, but it's an inspection that we do on our own, uh, to protect the public that's, that may be passing under the bridge. And, um, we, uh, put together, uh, significant findings that we found on the 25th Street Viaduct and presented them in a certified letter, uh, to CSX last fall.
Was there a response?
Yes, they did. We, we had recommended that they provide netting under, uh, 25th Street Viaduct. Uh, they came back, uh, about two months later, met with us, showed us a plan to, uh, there was a two-fold plan. Uh, first, the net, the, uh, provide netting under the bridge to capture any loose materials and secondly, a rehabilitation plan, uh, to take care of, uh, the various issues, uh, that, uh, that, that were happening with that 25th Street, uh, Viaduct. So now, a lot of that was at the, uh, at the encouragement, uh, of, uh, of Councilman Johnson who has, uh, tireless, tirelessly has, has been, uh, working with CSX to get them to, uh, to up their game. But, uh, we're there, we're right there as a partner documenting where there's problems, putting pen to paper and, and, and sending it to them for their response.
So did I understand you to say that not just the Viaduct, but other bridges around the city? You have a matrix that you are prepared to inspect and work with them on?
Yeah, we're working on a program of inspection. We haven't developed anything specific like a matrix, but we provide, uh, letters and reports to them when we get the information. Uh, we were able to look at six bridges in the fall. We took a break through the winter and we're getting ready to start again for the spring now.
All right, so between myself and, and Councilman Johnson, who are, those are, those are our white whales, these bridges. I actually have a paperweight that has, um, the railroad spikes that I keep because one fell down 152nd and Jefferson. So if you could, and I know it's a, a, a human capital investment, to look at a particular time schedule quarterly, yearly, annually, that says, we're going to hit six bridges in the first quarter and then we're going to report back and then we're going to do another six bridges in this area. Um, and prioritizing not just my district or, or Councilman Johnson's district, but the worst of the worst and, and getting to them first and, and provide that to the Chair, I think, that would be worthwhile. So we, you know, we record all these and, you know, the reason I have such a good memory is because we write it down. So, thank you. Um, I'm going to yield to Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be brief because I neglected to, uh, also say what a great job the Streets Department is doing and, uh, and to thank, uh, particularly Commissioner Perry who saw an issue, stopped by my office to educate me about the issue and actually give me some information and, uh, recommendations on to better handle, uh, the issue that I had raised. So thank you very much and keep up the good work.
You're welcome, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Commissioner, I, I've never heard in the last eight years this kind of love fest for your department. I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm taken aback by it.
But we, we greatly appreciate it. As I tell everyone, uh, the Streets Department has the hardest work and employees in all of city government and, uh, the deputies, uh, they, they bring it 24/7. They really do.
And thank you for that. Um, having him yield, I would then like to go into bike lanes. How are we, over the last couple of years, progressed? Are we, um, moving more towards bike lanes? Where, where are we in that progression?
Uh, we've, we've had a lot of success. We have over 200 miles, as you know, in the city. We're working on expanding that network in what we call the priority areas, so areas where we feel like there's a lot of demand for bike use and areas where, uh, there are activities that can easily be supported with bike use. Uh, one of the things we focused on is trying to find creative sources of funding. So we've been very involved with our partners in, uh, the Commerce Department, the Water Department, also with the Mayor's Office of Transportation in pursuing, uh, funding from both the state and the federal government to expand our bike network. Uh, we recently received a grant for about $300,000 in order to do expansion, which will support the Bike Share Program, which is now kicking off this month.
Was there a backlog at one point, uh, for bike lanes?
Uh, there are a number of areas where we have had, uh, plan in place to put in bike lanes and one of the things that we try to do, to do it most efficiently is to put the bike lanes in along with paving projects. So as the paving proceeds, so does the bike lane expansion proceed.
So how many new miles of bike lane do we expect this year?
I have to get back to you on that. It does depend a little bit on how much paving we get done and we do have a paving plan that we put together. I think we've, uh, in the last week, prepared that to deliver to council, so I'll have to review that and give you a precise number at that time.
How many miles of street do we have? 2,500 miles of street?
It's, uh, 2525.
Say that again. What is 25?
2,525 miles.
Okay, and 25 miles. And how much actually, I know there are several types of paving, um, and could you explain the different types of paving, surfacing versus paving?
In terms of the work of putting, well-
Yes, one is a deep grade, uh, as I understand?
I'm sorry?
One is a grading and then paving?
Well, there's a process of paving which involves milling before we do the paving.
Right, that's what I'm-
That's what you mean. So typically what we do is we contract out the milling work based on the equipment that's needed. That's not stuff that the city keeps with the Streets Department. And then after that takes place, we'll do, uh, a, a paving job. We'll put down, uh, overlay of paving on top of that. Uh, in addition to that, we have experimented with some other techniques which are more temporary, which do not include the milling. And the Streets Department is moving away from this because we're finding that we weren't getting the performance that we thought we would.
What was the estimate on that was like five years?
We, we looked at some that were about five years and I think the, uh, the biggest promises were around the range of seven years.
So you thought it was seven, we wind up with five at a equilibrium point, it's not worth it?
Less than five in a lot of cases.
So how many miles of paving will we do next year? What's your estimate?
We're looking at 58 miles, I believe, in that order.
Um, I think we're at 66 for this year and 85 for, uh, the 2016 budget.
How many of your streets of that 25 miles and 2,500, uh, 25, what is it, 25 miles?
2525.
Say that, give me the 225.
2,525.
Right. All right. Are considered good roads and I, and I leave that to you to determine what a good road is.
I, um, I don't, I, I do have an analysis of that, which I don't have in front of me. Uh, in order to give you a, a full answer, uh, we have to break down that, that, that total into different categories. And, uh, there's different road types, um, and, and each one has, has its own, uh, particular rating in terms of, uh, the percentage that are considered to be in a state of good repair. I'd be happy to send that in- I'd be happy to send that information over to you after this hearing.
Do you keep track of biking and motorcycle fatalities?
We don't keep track of it year to year. We have been working on doing a biennial report, which calculates fatalities overall. We break out bike fatalities, pedestrian fatalities, but we don't have a specific carry for... category for motorcycle fatalities.
All right. We'd like you to do that, and I don't want to try to put the liability on your department, but if there's a correlation between a bike fatality and where a bike lane is not or where a pothole is, we need to... I thought the chat on you. All right. So I'm going to stop, and I'm going to recognize Councilman Squillish. He's going to play.
Thank you. I thought it was your show here.
Yeah. I thought the advantage of being a people... I see it's not. Councilman Squillish.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. During the process, I guess, of the street repairs, and it seems like hopefully we'll get to more of them, during the pothole repairs, are they repaired on a Coleman basis? Or do you have crews out there that are just looking for potholes along the way and fix them at that point?
We typically are looking to address complaints that we get in. We track 3-1-1. We also take complaints sometimes directly to the Streets Department.
All right. So if you don't have a complaint of a pothole, it won't necessarily get fixed?
Well, we do get out there, and we do see things on our own staff, so we'll address those things that our staff sees as well.
All right. Because I mean, one of the things our office always says is, "Well, that pothole's been there a month." And I said, "Well, did you tell anybody?" You know? And they said, "Oh, no." Well, it's just not going to get fixed. So that... I mean, it does help if they do report them. And also on the website, the Streets Department website, where they do the pothole repairs, and that has seemed to work very well for the regular people who are calling in. Even if they call our office, we could put them in through there, and it really seems to get attention rather quickly, and your turnaround time has been great. It's just a matter of knowing where they are. And I know we just recently got a list, I guess, of street repavings that will be happening. Is there any way, if there's a concern on a certain street or we see a street that may need is in more disrepair, to reach out to you and swap a street in those type of situations?
Yeah. We have published the paving list for this year. If you have a... If you were counting on a street that you thought was in dire straits and needed to be repaired and saw a street on the list that is in not as bad a shape, let us know. We'll take it into consideration. But within the district, we need to keep a balance on how many streets that we're doing. So you would have to basically give up a street to get a street added. The other thing that we need to do is that when we put those lists together, we go through a process called utility clearance to make sure that the streets that we are doing aren't going to get torn up by the Water Department or the Gas Works the next year. So if they're on a utility list, they may be in a state of disrepair, but we don't want to get in and repave them now just to have them torn up next year. So we do have to check the utility schedules before we would make a swap on a particular street.
That's good to know. Also, when we, I guess, go in and there's street markings or that are faded or whatnot for whatever reason, is there a timeline that we redo the crosswalks and things like that? Or is that done periodically? Or should we report the crosswalks being faded and so forth?
I think you should report if you see the markings are faded. We'll try and get out in the course of the work that we're doing to maintain those and bring them up to the brightness and contrast that they should be. As far as a timeline, that will vary street by street because it's really the traffic that wears out the markings, and so it depends on what kind of traffic the street is getting to know when to go back and look at that kind of thing. But they should be refreshed after the paving takes place.
And how about inlet cleaning? I mean, that's the... Was that done in conjunction with the Water Department?
That's right. And we will, as we're doing other things, inform the Water Department. But when constituents contact us, we usually have them contact the Water Emergency Desk or the Water Department to let them know.
I mean, when you're doing the street repairs, not so much as a clog sewer, but do you work in conjunction with the Water Department at any point there or not really?
Not typically.
All right. Thank you very much.
Councilman, just a couple of quick questions. Retaining walls and alleys and driveways. You are very helpful. Give me your perspective on them. I want you to know that we're looking to the state to try to create a fund, and could you elaborate on what the possibilities were if we can get state cooperation?
We haven't directly talked to the state about obtaining funding at that level, but we are aware of your concerns. Retaining walls and driveways are a critical issue in Philadelphia. They are private infrastructure that is in many cases in a state of disrepair with no discernible program to help those folks bring those assets back into good condition. In a lot of cases, a worn-out driveway, a broken driveway, or a dangerous retaining wall will depress real estate values in a neighborhood and make a block unlivable. So we recognize the fact that there needs to be a program for addressing retaining walls, addressing driveways, and perhaps even addressing sidewalks at private residents. But it's a huge issue. It's an issue that's been out there for decades that, for one reason or another, just hasn't gotten to the point where there's a program in place to address those needs appropriately.
So whether it's retaining walls in Overbrook or Manniong, you know, we're faced with high expense per foot of replacing these walls that some residents find it onerous to be able to do. In the case of driveways, I almost view that... Well, no, not driveways, alleys. In alleys, I almost view that as a public safety issue. Our first responders, whether it's fire coming in from a rear entrance as opposed to where a fire might be in the front, them having good lighting like you are working on, but access and egress through that is a life-saving measure, not only to the inhabitants of the residents, but to the firefighters and police officers that find themselves running back there. We have to figure that out by way of keeping them clean and being well-lit, and also in a state of repair where somebody running down a driveway chasing a perpetrator of a crime doesn't injure himself or herself in the process. We have to... It's almost a public safety issue to me, to be able to respond to a fire, to be able to apprehend a criminal or prevent loss of life.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. Through the Future Track Program, we have been cleaning those alleyways. The department is over 90% complete, relamping those alleyways, and in almost all cases, we're upgrading the lighting to LED to provide a cleaner, brighter lighting through those alleyways. But we do not have a mechanism at this point to repair an alleyway that may have broken concrete or an irregular path.
Okay. We need to work on that, and hopefully our friends at the state may offer us some type of assistance to create some type of revolving loan fund, low-interest, no-interest loan fund, a recoupable grant of some sort to try to address these critical issues. A couple of years ago, a good friend of mine lost their son because of an accidental ingestion of outdated medications. And his name was Timmy, and it was a good friend of mine, Bernie Strand's son. What are we doing as a city to create a safer prescription disposal mechanism by way of trash and other places that we can keep it from going into our streets and into our waterways?
Councilman, there, we don't have a program at all that would address the medical issue. I'm not sure if this is something we may have to talk to health about, but as far as disposal of medicine and things of that nature, that would more so be the Health Department. There's no mechanism in place for us to deal with medical waste or any type of medicine disposal.
Okay. That's a challenge. And finally, streetscape in Manniong. How are we doing on progressing on that? We have some proposed prep work, lighting, and street trees and other stripping. Is that on its way? Do we have a timeframe for that? And if you don't have it now...
We will check with Commerce. We typically coordinate with them on the streetscape project so we can get some information on that and get back to you.
Right. You know, all politics is local. So, all right. Are there any other questions for this department? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Councilman.
This committee will stand at recess until 5:00 p.m., at which time we will have public testimony here in room 400C. Thank you all very much. I think you can get most things done in a five-minute fashion, and if everybody's ready, we'll begin now. I see Commissioner Singer here.
Yes, but I don't want to get in front of anybody.
You don't want to get in front of anybody? Okay. Will a clerk please read the first person signed up to testify?
I do not have you on the list. Do you want to be added?
Please.
Miss? Adrian Jacoby, Tara McCoy, Elizabeth Olhorn.
And thank you all for being one time. So is anyone here?
Nope, not from Philadelphia, reads.
Okay.
Jerry Johnson?
So I think people didn't believe we were going to start at 5:00. That's okay. That's a cautionary tale.
Is Jerry Johnson here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Bob Prividi?
That's me.
Okay. Deborah Schaaf? All right. We'll go in that order.
Thank you all for coming.
Jerry Johnson first.
You... The three of you can come up to the table. We'll take you one at a time. It'll save us a couple of steps. The rules are, please state your name clearly for the record. The stenographer needs to know who to attribute testimony to. Thank you, and good afternoon.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the time to address council. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, in 2008, I founded the Black Pearl Chamber Orchestra as a model for the 21st Century Orchestra with the mission to engage audiences and impact Philadelphia's diverse community in the arts. Our goals at Black Pearl are similar to many organizations with which you're probably already familiar, like Amla in the 7th District, the Johnson House and International Ballet Exchange, Art Reach in the 5th District, and of course, the city's own Dell Music Center in the 4th District, just to name a few. Like other small organizations in the arts, most of our concerts and educational and outreach programs are offered every year free to the public. Last summer, many city council members joined us at a concert when we were invited by Philadelphia Parks and Recreation to perform the first orchestra concert at the Dell in 36 years as part of an exciting vision that connected the Dell's past with the park's future. Imagine if the spark that we could ignite through economic revitalization and renewed vitality for the area around the Dell were ignited by combining the impact of Parks and Recreation with arts and culture. At its height in the 1930s through 50s, concerts at the Dell brought an audience of up to 20,000 people to the neighborhoods around East Fairmount Park. What would it take for that to happen again in East Fairmount Park and other places around the city? Two resources for arts and culture in the city are already in place, the Office of Arts, Culture, and the Creative Economy, and the Philadelphia Cultural Fund. In 1986, Mayor Wilson Good, Sr., established the Mayor's Office for Arts and Culture to support the sector and integrate its contributions into the larger strategy for the city. Later, Mayor Nutter expanded the role of the office to include the growing creative economy. Then in 1992, council took the bold step of chartering the creation of the Philadelphia Cultural Fund, offering critical general operating support for all arts and culture organizations and underlying the city's commitment to the growth of the sector. Since that time, the cultural sector in Philadelphia has grown to a $3.3 billion industry, offering 33,000 events that attract 17 million visitors to the region annually and create 44,000 full-time equivalent jobs. A large part of that growth has been the reliable support from council and the mayor's office. However, while the cultural fund has been a steadfast resource for the arts, at every mayoral election, arts and culture organizations hold their breaths, not knowing if the next mayor will once again choose to support the sector by keeping that office open. Uncertainty is not conducive to growth, and history shows that the arts and culture sector has reason to be concerned since in 2004, Mayor John Street closed the office for four years. The tenuous position of the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture places the stability of the entire creative economy at risk. And at a time when Philadelphia is becoming known as a cultural destination for visitors and a resource for millennials looking for opportunities and resources to bring their innovative ideas to fruition, this is a risk that Philadelphia cannot afford to take. Imagine if the city endowed a permanent Department of Arts and Culture and integrated that creative power with the work of other city agencies like Commerce, Social Services, and the School District even, to attract new corporate investments, create jobs, and the quality of life in Philadelphia that the city deserves. Black Pearl's concert at the Dell, in conjunction with Philadelphia Parks and Recreation, was just one example of that potential impact for such a department. For example, the city is planning to, or has already made improvements in park infrastructure, lighting, landscaping, and transportation to the Dell, and itself has been renovated as part of larger initiatives like this 2004 Strawberry Mansion Community Plan and 2014 New Fairmount Park Plan. And now the fun part should begin. Providing appropriate municipal resources for arts programming at the Dell will ensure that those investments in the infrastructure pay off by creating a hub of creativity and a place and a reason for people to gather and connect so that the spark we lit last June at that concert will grow into a blaze of activity in the area and start the process of economic revitalization, not only for East Fairmount Park but for the entire city. Are there any questions from council members?
Thank you so much. We're going to let each of the panelists up.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. It's a different protocol. We'll let each of the three of you speak and then open it up for questions. For the record, we've been joined by Councilwoman Tascow, Councilman Good, and Councilman O'Neill.
You're next.
You want to...
Okay.
Yeah, let them... Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So don't go anywhere.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Deborah Schaaf, and I'm here today on behalf of Feet First Philly. Feet First Philly is a pedestrian advocacy group sponsored by the Clean Air Council. Our goals are to encourage walking and to increase walkability by working for improvements to pedestrian safety, comfort, and the attractiveness of the streetscape. Pedestrians are second only to automobile users when total trips are counted in Philadelphia. Although walking has many health benefits, it can be dangerous. More than one-third of the city's traffic deaths are pedestrians. Funding for the Streets Department benefits pedestrians in many ways. For example, by replacing worn-out crosswalks, by reconfiguring dangerous intersections, and by updating traffic signals for safer operations.
That was from the previous...
From before, yes. I understand. More funding is needed for the Streets Department to expand the capacity for all of these kinds of improvements. In particular, I would like to urge increased funding for a specific area of the Streets Department budget that is important for people who walk in the city. The Streets Department's right-of-way unit is responsible for sidewalk issues, including construction disruption, sidewalk cafes, newsstands, A-frame signs, and anything else that may obstruct pedestrian movement on the sidewalk. Disruption of the pedestrian path by construction projects is among the top concerns identified by pedestrians in our surveys. Feet First Philly has recently been documenting problems near construction sites. Sidewalks adjacent to work sites are often closed to pedestrians for long periods of time, and signs that inform the public whether these closures were approved by the Streets Department or not can rarely... Sidewalks adjacent to work sites are often closed to pedestrians for long periods of time. And signs that inform the public whether these closures were approved by the Streets Department or not can rarely be found. We believe that having more inspectors in the right-of-way unit will not only help improve pedestrian safety, but will also encourage more people to walk in Philadelphia. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you for your testimony. We've also, we've also been joined by Council President Clark and Councilwoman Maria Sanchez.
Okay. Hello, my name is Bob Prividi. I'm here as a policy coordinator for the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia. I am here, um, there is a tremendous demand for safety and better streets all over Philadelphia. 26% of Philadelphia workers today take public transit to work, 8.5% walk, and 2% bike. Together, over a third of Philadelphia workers get to and from work using streets, sidewalks, and they do not use a car. And these commuters need safer streets even more than motorists because they are so vulnerable. As part of my testimony, I am submitting the comments of over 200 persons who have signed a petition on our website telling their reasons for why they want safer streets. Here's one of those stories from Lindsay, who lives in the 2nd District. "I'm a Philadelphia resident, and I work in Center City. I'm a bicyclist, pedestrian, and a transit user. Streets are arguably one of the most important assets to our city, and their safety, usability, and maintenance need to be made a much higher priority for the Streets Department, the Planning Commission, and ultimately, our City Council." We need to say, we need to, we, we say we want to increase job opportunities, improve our school systems, and attract new businesses and residents. But how will we accomplish these things if the potential users are unable to access them in a safe and affordable manner? The status quo, that is to say, the current policies protecting and promoting motor vehicle ownership, like minimum parking requirements and the absence of protected bike lanes, is clearly not working. Pedestrians and children are being struck and killed in Philadelphia by speeding and distracted drivers. Yet we still design our roadway network to, to get cars through as fast as possible. Our neighborhoods are clogged with cars that block sidewalks, ADA ramps, and hydrants, yet we make it as easy as possible to own a vehicle in the city. Isn't it time to change the way we plan our streets so we can protect our citizens from careless, destructive, aggressive drivers? The Streets Department needs to be funded so that the lifeline of our city, its streets, sidewalks, and bike lanes, can provide its citizens the safest, most affordable, and most effective way to move about. And most importantly, City Council needs to listen and support the experts who have done the studies and spent the time actually learning how Philadelphia can function to its fullest capacity with safe and complete street designs for all users. I'm also submitting these comments, uh, here as I said earlier. And, uh, the Bicycle Coalition of Philadelphia has, um, created the Better Mobility 2015 Forum, um, policy agenda, which, um, all the mayoral candidates, um, pretty much adopted. And we had a very successful mayoral forum. We've also been passing it along to individual council members. I invite any council member, if you'd like us to come in and chat with you, Council, Councilperson Jones, we've invited you to come on over to our office. Down, we're over at 1500 Walnut. We're also working with the Bike Share people. Um, we think that making the streets safe for all users is critical. If we were in this just for bikes, it, it wouldn't seem like, um, uh, we would be, um, we're not, we're not selfishly looking at this just for bikes. We are about more than just bikes. We're about, um, helping all users of the street. Because we feel if you calm the street down, it's going to help business, uh, in the neighborhoods, kids getting to school, people getting to work. You know, a third of our, you know, as I said earlier, a third of our people get to work without a car. So if we look, if we change that dynamic about how we look at our streets, and also, when you look at our grid here in Center City, it cannot accommodate, uh, much more traffic. To take advantage of the other, you know, public transit and bike lanes will help make the city a more greener and enjoyable place to be. So I thank you for this time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tascow. Thank you all for coming out this evening, and I'm sorry. So I started, I'm sorry. So I heard part of it on your, Jerry, your testimony on, on the, uh, on TV up there. But, so I just want to ask you, um, a question. Are there models for what you're suggesting?
Oh, models, uh, of course, there are some models. Um, what, what I was suggesting and what is just one idea of what could happen at the Dell in particular, and I'm choosing that because it is a city-owned venue, and there are some existing civic plans that are already in motion in terms of, uh, Parks and Recreation doing some lighting improvements, sidewalk landscaping improvement. There's already, uh, Keystone Tax incentives available for businesses moving into the area. So the last layer to really give people a reason to come to that area and spark that economic revitalization is appropriate funding for the arts and, and, and having a department, um, that supports arts and culture in relationship to other branches of city government. So the, the best model I can think of is actually Summer Stage in New York City. If any of you have ever had an opportunity to go there, it is an incredibly large, totally free music, art, dance, uh, puppetry. They have all kinds of activities at a variety of public park spaces throughout the city of New York that incorporates the arts. And so these events really bring a lot of neighborhood cohesion, not just to the main venue there in Central Park, but a lot of places and open spaces throughout New York City. And so it isn't just a place-specific kind of thing. What we consider Summer Stage model to be is an example of what the industry calls creative placemaking. And it is kind of the latest thing in terms of resilient cities using, uh, arts to kind of be incorporated into civic planning in a way that isn't just, oh, we're going to a restaurant, or, oh, there's a, there's a music kind of venue here, and we're doing that. But really, how does arts and culture create the quality of life, like I said, that's going to bring new investment, that's going to keep our millennials, who have the, all these great ideas and new businesses here in Philadelphia? And so speaking on behalf, not only of myself, Black Pearl, who would have a great time doing concerts at the Dell, but really, the entire arts and culture sector is, is looking for a hero to come to the rescue of the Office of Arts and Culture in some way. Every, like I said, every mayoral election, we sweat. We just sweat. Um, and so Council has taken that step, like I said, of establishing the Cultural Fund. You guys have the power and the inspiration. You know your constituents better than we do. We serve them, but you know all of the needs that they have. Arts and culture is one that can be incorporated into that, and we are happy to serve your constituents in that way.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your, uh, compassion, um, and passion.
Thank you.
More so, passion for the Office of Arts and Culture as well as for the Cultural Fund. Uh, as you know, and for the record, the Cultural Fund is a, uh, program started by the City Council. Yes, okay. City, I have to remind you that it's a City Council program to provide funding for the, uh, arts and cultural programs throughout the city. And, um, uh, we used to have Class 500 when I came here in the olden days. And certainly, um, uh, there were some people in the press who didn't like it because they called it our slush fund. So, um, Joan Spector, uh, was a leader in establishing by, uh, by legislation, the Cultural Fund. And we need to continue to support and fund that, uh, organization so that they can adequately fund the cultural programs in the entire city. So, um, um, there are some areas that have more programs. And, uh, and then I do. But that's okay. That's okay. What I do in my district comes out of the, uh, Activities Fund. So there's no either-or, it's both. And it's very important that we understand that and that we support the Cultural Fund and that we see the Office of Arts and Culture grow into the, um, model as suggested by Jerry and, and, uh, and all of us who support that, uh, part of the city government. So I came down here to just put my two cents in and let her know...
There's more than two cents.
There will be a lot of people on Council, I hope, who will be supporting, um, her call.
Just, just one final point. This is, there, there are many other cities, major cities in, 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 throughout the country that have this office, and it really levels the playing field for all arts and cultures so that it's not just one organization's agenda. It is the city's agenda that is met, so that all cultural institutions, and especially the creative economy, which is creating jobs, are really supported. So I, I think with L.A., Chicago, New York, Philadelphia, we need to be right up there because we're becoming a real powerhouse, and it's because of arts and culture and the creative economy.
Well, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Now, could I ask this gentleman about the bike while I'm here? How you doing?
Good to see you. Nice to see you.
I just have one question about how do you, um, protect pedestrians when they may run into a bicycle or a bicycle runs into them? Because some years, that friend of mine was walking down Warner Street, and she was hit by a bicycle, a guy on a bicycle. And the police were sitting there, and they did absolutely nothing. And it's against the law, and he's like, hit, run. So how do we monitor that and enforce the compliance to be safe? And, and if they should happen, they're in someone, maybe an accident. Most of the problem is, uh, what do we do about that?
The Bicycle Coalition, uh, advocates for safe streets for all users. We absolutely do not, um, like it when bicyclists are misbehaving. But I don't have to remind you, automobile drivers don't necessarily behave all the time either, and pedestrians don't either. What we have found is that when you allocate the appropriate amount of street space to all users, and you think about it, and it's of course a changing thing as you, as you go through time. If you allocate it fairly and you look at it, like Spruce and Pine have turned out to be hugely successful. The data shows that the number of cars using Spruce and Pine is the same as prior to it. And it, and we've taken a lane of service traffic away, and traffic crashes are down 25% over three years. And when you give the bicyclists a legal place to go, they use it. And so you can avoid those potential areas of conflict. Are we perfect? No, but we've kind of forgotten about other users since the end of World War II. So we're playing catch-up. So my advice would be, you know, the Better Mobility Plan that we've put out in 2015 kind of looks at the, we're calling for a task force. We're looking for Council and the mayor to come together with all stakeholders. Take a real look at crash data, and you're going to find that it's around public transit stops. Lot of public transit stops, Roosevelt Boulevard. And we want to look at those areas, and we want to bring everybody into the room. We're in discussions with Jefferson University. They, they want to work with us because they've got too many head traumas from pedestrian crashes. And they want to work with us and look at the data. I, I've called Captain Fran Healy at the Police Department. I want, we want to compare police data. We need a task force citywide to look at where the problems are. And the Bicycle Coalition is simply advocating, look, let's all come together in the room and work together. Engineers throw out this phrase, I'm sure you heard it from Charlie Denny and others, the three E's, uh, engineering, education, and enforcement. And I think what they're struggling to communicate to people, if, if you look at it from a city administration point of view, it's, you can't just have the police go out and do enforcement. You just can't have streets go out and paint something. We need, we need to educate people, the kids. We have a Safe Foods Philly program that we're trying to save right now. Um, you know, it's getting cut from the Health Department. It's a small program. We'd like to see it expanded, where we educate kids about how to be safe on the streets, how to walk safe, bike safe. Um, maybe some places, we need to do some serious engineering changes. Again, we've given over most of the streets to cars over the years. But every place, if you talk to people who live on Pine and Spruce, even if they were against us, now they're saying, oh, no, you've calmed the street down tremendously. And it makes for better street life. I think that this can go throughout the city, broad and all, in your area. We're studying very closely now. There's, you know, you've got Central, you've got a major bus depot there, a major transit stop, a lot of businesses. We need to calm our neighborhoods down so that they become, become the economic engines that we want them to be. And by all means, we need to, you know, when people are misbehaving, we need to keep that education up, and we have to tell the police, no, we want the rules enforced.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, she, uh, also, Councilwoman Blackwell was here. Councilman Squiller and Councilman Bass have joined us. Um, Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be brief, uh, but I wanted to address all three issues, um, quickly. One, uh, the Cultural Fund. I believe it's been Council's position, not in writing, but in, in practice, to, uh, make the, um, current year appropriation for the Cultural Fund, the Arts and Cultural Fund, the, um, floor for the future year. And I expect we'll do that again. Uh, and that doesn't mean we liked it as a floor, but it won't be any. I'd be, I'd be shocked beyond belief if, if, uh, that money isn't restored and we don't try to put more in. That's how important all of us collectively have felt about the need for it and that, um, um, even people say there's never enough. There really isn't ever enough for all the good that comes out of it. Um, and I won't go through all the reasons, they've been documented. Um, the, uh, the two other points, one pedestrians, one bicyclist, bicyclist. I think it would be important if, working with the Streets Department, the Mayor's Office, the Transportation Committee, to try to get a couple of things at least that we know work and make safer for, um, people across the street, particularly kids, and, and people that are a little slower, walking, um, uh, older adults, and also, uh, bicyclists who are, as you said, pretty unprotected, uh, for the most part. Uh, and that is to at least do some trials, uh, with bump outs at the corner, um, which compresses across, not only compresses the amount of street you have to cross, it's actually pretty attractive, uh, when you, when you bump out the sidewalk at the corner. But it's much safer for people crossing because instead of a car blocking you, they can, they, as you're waiting on the curb for a light to change, or usually it's a, it's a traffic light, uh, that this comes into play with, you can see the car coming, you're not blocked by anything, and a car can see you. And, uh, it just makes it eminently safer, uh, to, to cross the street. And for even drivers to pick up something they may, not paying it too much attention, miss, which is a person. Um, the, on the bicycle side, I've been in a couple of cities where they've started to do the protected lanes. And, uh, it's an eye-opener when you think about it, like, why don't we think of this when we were doing Stripes? You know, at least in cer- certain air, critical areas or certain easy areas? Because you're next to a park, or you're next to, uh, an institution or somewhere. There's no parking anyway. So it's, it's, when you have to park, you just move out a, you move out a lane. It all seems to work. Uh, but a couple of examples like that, you know, they're in questionnaires, we're, we're hearing, but it wouldn't take too much to kind of get them out there, particularly closer to Center City where people, more people would see it. And it wouldn't, could be in a neighborhood, they're probably more in a, in a, in a more proximate neighborhood to start with. But I just think they're, they're kind of common sense things that, that, uh, uh, it doesn't have to be every mile, every, you know, foot of, of street. It doesn't have to be every corner, but there are certain corners that we know are more dangerous than others, habitually, often at, at, uh, pretty busy intersections. And there's some pretty vulnerable people crossing, and just one piece. There's a whole lot of, um, things, but it's, sort of calms traffic as well when, when they, when they know that's, they're approaching an intersection like that. But that, I'll leave it at that, but I do think that there's, there's, um, a future for both improvement with pedestrians, bicyclists, and hopefully we'll continue, uh, what, what we're doing and even get more aggressive on the culture, uh, arts and culture side. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, next we have Councilman Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I want to reiterate to my colleagues I said about the, the Cultural Fund and how important it is. Um, as Councilwoman Tascow has mentioned, uh, my district does receive a pretty good fare of, uh, Cultural Fund dollars and, uh, very much appreciated. And it's really the avenue that has grown the district in a way where people feel that they could have a performing arts venue, an art show, whatever it is necessary. And it attracts more people to that area and actually grows the area. So, uh, I believe it's a very small investment in, in arts and culture considering what it means to the city and the growth of the city of Philadelphia. So I, I really believe in it. I believe we should increase the budget, uh, of that, and, uh, hopefully we could have the administration agree with us to do that also. Um, as far as the, the issues for bike lanes and, and scooter parking and other issues that we had, uh, across the city of Philadelphia, I think it's, it's a major concern of the city to look at different avenues and different ways to see how we could grow transportation in and around the city of Philadelphia. city of Philadelphia with making accessible parking for scooters and motorcycles, which is another usage that we don't often talk about. But also, too, to have the equality and understanding of people to share the road, how important it is to understand there, that you have to be aware of your surroundings and the people near you. The protected bike lanes are a great way to go in the future. Unfortunately, some of our narrower streets, it's almost impossible to get on there. So we have to work with what we have, and you know, especially in certain parts of the city, if you try to remove parking, it becomes a nightmare. So, I mean, but we have so many creative and smart people in the city of Philadelphia to go in there and look at ways. And I think if we do it right and we include all the people in the process, again, are we going to get 100% of the people happy? Absolutely not. We're not. But I see us as a city that's growing and is really being progressive. We need to find ways to add different transportation models, even public transportation models, whether it's bringing the trolley back or adding new routes, and also making those transportation models be able to use and access bicycles onto them. I know SEPTA has done that now and looking to grow that also. And we, as council, have the ability to work with the Streets Department and transportation and planning to do that. Do we always agree? Absolutely not also, because we have a consistency base that we have to listen to. But we know that we need to do it. We know that it's something necessary. And we look at best practices in other cities. Other cities have different street grades than we have, but I really appreciate effort that's been put into this. And we, as a city, need to, I think, don't have to copy other cities, but maybe invent new ways to get these bike lanes and whether it's a buffered lane or even just a bike lane itself, even more trails that we do along the rivers that we're doing now and looking at those things. And I got to give credit to all the organizations involved, because anytime we change something in the city, it's not always a positive thought by everyone. So I want to give credit. Do you have ideas, and I'll just ask a real quick question, ideas on, as Philadelphia is and compared to other cities, how they do things? Do you have any other ideas why, how we could do, maybe add, not so much shared lanes, but independent lanes for people with the street grids that we have, and make it work where maybe some streets are just bike streets and some streets aren't? I don't know. Is that something that's being looked at?
Yes, it is. We're looking, we're working with the paving budget of the Streets Department. And in many areas, it's, we really don't want to get cast as taking parking lanes away. We don't, we feel that there's enough space on existing streets for all users. That said, obviously, places in your district, it's extremely tough. But we've got approval for the 13th Street and the 15th Street, kind of, it's a combination sharrows kind of approach. But basically, what we do is we're telling the users of 13th and 15th to expect bicyclists there. And you've got the Through Street of Broad Street right there. So if you want to go a little bit faster, head over to Broad. But we do think that, we think you're absolutely right. Depending on what part of the city that you're in, there are examples we can pull from all over the country, but ultimately, we have to make it fit here in Philadelphia. That's why we think it's so important that we come together, you know, we look at the accident data, and we start to examine streets and neighborhoods for their own specific needs. You know, what will the accident, what will the Jefferson Hospital teach us when we start to understand, you know, what are these head traumas? What do we, you know, where are these incidents happening? And we start to work that out with all the agencies and with all the stakeholders. We think that there are infinitely more solutions for figuring out how to share the pavement so that everybody's kept happy.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. I shared the reception with you for the arts and culture. And what I remember, Councilwoman Tascow, was that, you know, they, each cultural group came up to thank the district councilperson. And my line might have been six people. Councilman Squiller had them doubled up. I thought they were giving out food in his line. It was that many people, but what they explained to me was, a lot of those arts and culture groups serviced the whole city, so I didn't feel that bad. All right. Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you. Yeah, Councilman Squiller, he has something going on here.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, well, good evening. And so, Bob, the first thing I just want to mention is that I heard you mention Broad and Alney, and as it's in my district, and it's the first time I'm hearing, I'd like to hear more about what your thoughts and ideas are. She's, that is correct, that is correct. So we would like to hear more information about, you know, any plans for Broad and Alney.
Absolutely. We're just taking a look at the data now. We haven't kind of culminated anything, any results or anything yet. We're pulling together that data now, so, yeah, absolutely, we'd like to share that with both you.
Sure.
Councilwoman Tascow and Councilwoman Bass.
It's one of the busiest, you know, transportation hub, I think it's the second busiest in the city.
It is.
And, you know, so, you know, tens of thousands of people use Broad and Alney every single day. And so, you know, obviously, there would be a huge effect on our constituents, so we want to make sure that.
Absolutely. Well, Ellen Kiner, who works, who has a child at Central, actually emailed me, and she said, you got to come out here and see this, because she knows I'm always interested in these issues. And I said, well, we'll start looking at it at the Bicycle Coalition, and the data is pretty clear that something needs to happen there. So we're just pulling that information together, look forward to having a meeting with you on it.
Okay, great. And also for Jerry Lynn, I just wanted to also applaud you for your advocacy on behalf of the arts and culture funding and making the office permanent. And, you know, we have had some conversations with Ms. Haynes regarding that, and look forward to having more conversations to make sure that, you know, with the exception of Councilman Squiller, that for the rest of us, that we make sure that we see the neighborhood groups get the support that they need, because it's, you know, it's heartbreaking when you've got, you know, particularly in the eighth district, we have so many arts and cultural organizations that are really on the verge, you know, constantly of closing their doors. And so, you know, when we look at where the funding needs to go, I certainly hope, as we continue the conversations, that that is a large part of it, and that there's a commitment from the Office of Arts and Culture to make sure that that is actually what is happening, so.
I'm sorry. I just thank you for saying that, yes.
Absolutely.
That's, I wanted that point to be across, and I'm so grateful to have all the council support. It's, the Philadelphia Cultural Fund is a critical layer, but the next critical layer, like you said, is that level playing field that the Office of Arts and Culture and the creative economy can give to those small organizations. Thank you.
That's correct, because it's important, you know, like, it's great to have, you know, our downtown institutions, and we want them, and we want them to survive and to thrive, and to be supportive of them. But for some people, they never get out of the neighborhood. You know, the neighborhood is where it's at. And so they do their shopping, their, you know, their schooling, they're working in the neighborhood. And so whatever we can do to support neighborhood cultural institutions is going to be obviously a very important priority of mine, so, and I'm glad to hear it's yours as well. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I echo, first of all, the Black Pearl. I had the opportunity to see you conduct that orchestra. And when I tell you that you made me an instant fan, you made me tired watching you conduct. And it was just incredible, and it was vibrant, and it transformed the Dell instantly, and I just, I just loved it.
I just want to, I can't take all the credit for that, thank you. It was a hot day and I was tired, but the brilliant idea, really, I have to give all props to, I'm sorry, she's transcribing, I have to give all credit to, they'll take props, I have to give all credit to Commissioner Sloss and Department of Philadelphia Parks and Recreation, because they had the vision for what the Dell used to be and what it could be again, and they brought me in on that. And so really, to see Parks and Recreation, Arts and Culture working together, that is the vision for the city. That's it.
So one of the other intriguing things that I heard from the testimony here today was making places the center as opposed to, you know, creating places and destinations and cultural centers. Councilwoman Bass talked about neighborhoods, but one of the things that, in our large shopping center, West Park, we have transformed that from time to time into a town square, we built up a stage, and it just transforms music and entertainment and young kids dancing, just changed the whole atmosphere, and it made it a destination for shoppers, and it was vibrant to the businesses and helped stimulate sales. So one of the things that we're looking at is working with the township. You may not remember this, you're too young, Councilwoman, but there used to be a Sears out at 63rd Street. And so they're talking about reviving that to do transit-oriented development and putting a big parking lot there. And they wanted to do things like have Shakespeare in the parking lot.
I like the twist on the name, yes.
But they wanted just from, you know, pop-up kind of venues and to create this kind of vibrancy, and people know about it.
Right.
So it's just interesting what a little bit of creativity and a little bit of resources can do.
Absolutely. And to have Councilwoman Bass understand the importance of a department or, you know, the permanency of that Office of Arts and Culture is critical, because, you know, we as individual organizations have great ideas. And I have to say, I see arts and culture and bikes and pedestrians and Parks and Rec all aligned in the same mission for the city, so we're all brothers and sisters up here testifying. But the critical aspect is having that department-level support where they can really reach across into everything and really be integrated in the city's plan, not just accidentally on our own making things happen, but really have a concentrated effort to just bring the level of the city to where we know Philadelphia can be.
On the bike lanes, we were, I was talking to one of the reporters, and I, they asked about the Streets Department, and I said it was a love fest this afternoon, because people really appreciated the responsiveness of the Streets Commissioner. But one of the things we talked about was the expansion of the bike lane process. And he explained some of the challenges and his idea on how to do it, he was trying to incorporate it into other work that was being done in particular sections. And the obvious pushback from that with me, if you do it in a piecemeal way, you know, it won't actually have the consistency and continuity that if you planned it out specifically.
Yeah, Councilman, I'd like to have our deputy, he's here, Sarah Stewart, to talk specifically on that issue. She wants to speak specifically on the budget and the plans going forward. But you're right, it's kind of almost a two-pronged approach, because in some respects, you want to court, like you know this on Ridge Avenue, you want to get the laterals done to the buildings so that, you know, when you are finally paving and not ripping up the street a year later. So some of it's, I think it's a balancing act, really, between both needs, because so many people want to have access to the street. But I'm going to defer to Sarah Stewart to answer that question, please.
I would applaud that wisdom. All right. Are there any other questions for this group of people to testify? Seeing none, thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Can you move the next question?
Ken Weinstein. David Cantor. Alex Doty.
Thank you all.
Ken Weinstein. David Cantor. Alex Doty. Sarah Stewart. Joe O'Hara. Basil Gibbs.
Thank you all. Ms. Stewart, pull the mic a little closer to you. State your name for the record, and please begin your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Sarah Clark Stewart. I'm Deputy Director of the Bicycle Coalition of Greater Philadelphia. I thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I'm here to make public comment on the Streets Department operating in capital budgets. I'd like to try to make four points as quickly as possible. First, I urge City Council to approve the proposed fiscal year 2016 budgets for the Streets Department's operating and capital programs. The proposed fiscal year 2016 budget increases the paving budget from $16 million to $20.4 million, which would allow approximately 85 miles of streets to be repaved, a vast improvement over previous years. And we urge City Council to approve this budget and ultimately work with the next mayor to raise it, continue to raise the paving budget to at least $32 million, so that at least 130 miles can be repaved annually. That is what the Streets Department has said it needs to do in order to keep all of its city streets in good state of repair. And we applaud the Philadelphia Community Sustainability Initiative that the Council, City Council has developed for making the very same recommendation. On the operating side, the Streets Department's transportation projected FY '16 operating budget is a little bit over $33 million, and this is an increase of $1.17 million from what was budgeted in fiscal year '15. And that increase is very helpful and greatly, greatly needed. I will have her note that it still keeps the Streets Department on the transportation side operating budget at less than 1% of the general fund. I will also note that the transportation side of the Streets Department is 1/3 of the sanitation side's operating budget. It's less than the Fleet Department at $50 million and less than the Innovation and Technology Department at $46 million. So why is this so important? Because the Streets Department is the key to making Philadelphia's streets safer, and safer streets is a public safety issue. As you know, if streets aren't repaved, they start falling apart, as we all seen and witnessed. Cracks and bumps develop, manholes sink, potholes open up, gravel's everywhere, striping is nonexistent. And in the case, and they make it difficult for wheelchairs to cross, they become tripping hazards, they contribute to crashes, and cars and bicycles blow out their tires, or worse. Just to put it simply, those kinds of streets are unsafe. And in the case of Philadelphia's streets, there just hasn't been enough resources made available to the Streets Department to maintain the streets that they're responsible for, much less install innovative infrastructure such as protected bike lanes or curb bump outs or speed humps or roundabouts, all the things that we know help make streets safer and people safer. As was mentioned today, this afternoon, by Commissioner Perry, the city has 2,525 miles of streets that need to be maintained, repaired, reconstructed, repaved, restriped. And as of a year ago, the city had 900-mile backlog in streets that needed to be repaved. So what's happening is that this paving budget hasn't been big enough for the Streets Department to cut down on that backlog, and its operating funds have been going down every, almost every year for the past 10 years. And compared to the budgets of other cities, this looks even worse. Baltimore spends $143 per capita of its operating budget on streets. Philadelphia spends $16. Baltimore's operating budget for streets is 5.5% of its general fund. Philadelphia's is 0.84%. New York City has approximately one DOT worker for every street mile. Philadelphia has one Streets Department worker for every five miles. So the math is pretty simple. Only a more resourced Streets Department can deliver safer streets and safer citizens, and only safer streets will contribute to safer communities. And that's what we're here about, is communities of choice, communities where people want to live, communities where they feel safe. So two other points. As the Community Sustainability Initiative calls for in its safety index, better streets will increase neighborhood walkability and vitality. It also calls for making more retail corridors physically attractive, and that's what the Streets Department can do if it's sufficiently resourced. So I'll wrap up there very quickly, that the city of Philadelphia is on the right road, it's doing great stuff, but it's being left behind by other, its peer cities that are doing more. And we just urge City Council to approve these increases in budget so that the Streets Department can help make Philadelphia a safer city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. We're going to hold questions until all of the panelists present their testimony, and we'll open up for questions.
Hi, my name is Joe O'Hara. I'm with a company called Finland Corp. We follow tax sales and mortgage foreclosure sales in Philadelphia County and we help companies and individuals and estates go through the plight and journey of getting money back from the sheriff's sales. Sometimes a home will sell to tax sale for 40,000, the homeowner, after all municipals and sheriff fees, may have only owed 30,000. The municipals and sheriff's fees are, uh, the delinquent taxes, any gas bills, nuisance liens, um, parking tickets, probation, and there is a percentage of tax sales which create excess funds. Those excess funds are due and payable to someone, they are not the possession of the cities, they are maintained by the city until the appropriate party comes forward. There are rules in place for all 67 counties, this county does not follow them. The rule is to order a title report to say there's $10,000 left over and now we'll see if there's a mortgage, if there's a, a registered lien from a, um, credit card company or anything else. If there are none, it goes back directly to the homeowner. The homeowner has to physically petition for that. The city solicitor's office set up in 2010, a program called a registered, uh, I'm sorry, Sheriff's Registered Distribution Representative, I signed up for that program to work on a contingency fee basis to figure out who's owed money and tell them and help them get it back. My company is only paid if we are successful, there's no upfront fees. The sheriff's office does everything it can to block and harangue me and anybody else in this business. There are many families that I coach and do not sign up as a fee. I tell you, you don't need it, you've already been in there and this isn't something just against me, it's a problem there. There is very little transparency. Under the prior administration, there were two computers on the fifth floor in the real estate division of the sheriff's office. Those computers were for the public to use. You could look to see and say, oh, the property sold for 40, they paid water, sewer taxes, there may or may not be money. In 2011, uh, when there was a shakeup at the sheriff's office on January 7th, the sheriff's office shut down for a little bit. When it came back, they implemented a one computer. Now, that one computer, there was a maximum time of 30 minutes for the public. However, many of the agencies in the city and they seem to do with taxes, had to also use that one computer. The sheriff's had to set up that there's no time limit for that, so those computers could be used for days. In August 2013, at the decision of someone in the sheriff's office, they said, no more public computer. So, the procedure to research a property that may or may not have, um, excess funds is to stand in line, ask one of the, the people working at the front desk, could I have a fee screen distribution for this property, which in the past, the public could just look. The sheriff's computer is absolutely very slow. If someone like myself would ask for four of them, they ask you to come back because it takes a long time to print them out. Fiscally speaking, it makes much more sense to just simply have a computer for the city. The man hour spent just printing these, uh, fee screen distributions out, uh, is crazy. I thought that today's meeting was specifically, um, to address the Philadelphia Sheriff's Office. I see that it's just a full budget meeting, I've never spoke before, I do appreciate this opportunity. I was going to bring something up that, um, recently, things go on for months and years. You go in and ask for your funds, the sheriff's office asks you for nothing at all. They, they never respond, they may call the person that, that you brought in their information for a couple of years later and at any time they can say, oops, it's two years later, we feel that you are slipping, even though you live on your own, you have some type of dementia, you will not receive your funds. Recently, the, the new rule for, it's a new twist. I represent whoever is owed the funds. So, many times it's a mortgage company. I'll get a letter a couple of months after submitting a claim. I have several of these letters, this is kind of urgent because the woman's in her 90s, I submitted a claim in October of 2014, it's a very short letter, I'll read it if you don't mind. December 9th, Joe O'Hara, Finland, regarding Magnolia Highsmith, mortgage lien holder. Dear Mr. O'Hara, any claim that you have to excess funds held by the city of Philadelphia as a result of the tax sale of Filbert Street has been extinguished by operation of loan. The sheriff's office will distribute the property, the funds to the property owner. Sincerely, Joseph Vignola, undersheriff. I've written to the sheriff, I've written to, um, Buckovitz, I've gotten responses from many people other than the sheriff. Prior to receiving this letter, I was under the impression that a mortgage could only be extinguished through the recording of a mortgage release or a mortgage satisfaction or a court order signed by a judge. Since this, receiving these letters, it's more than one, I have pleaded with the sheriff's office for an explanation but have not received one. They're running amok over there, they don't like me, I'm fine with that. This isn't, this absolutely isn't about me. They're holding tens of thousands and this is the lifeline for some people. There's, you have nothing, you lost your house, you may have nothing, you're living with your mom, you're living nowhere. It would simply help and be fiscally responsible to put the computers back in so that the public, whether it be me or an attorney or anyone who wants to look at it, rather than hassle the public when they're simply asking for their funds. I appreciate you listening. I really did think this was a meeting strictly, uh, to address the people at the sheriff's office. I have no access to those that be at the sheriff's office. I have access to only the gatekeepers.
Councilwoman Tascop.
Well, the sheriff's department will come before the council to testify. Certainly, we would appreciate your testimony and we will, um, take notes from your testimony to ask questions about this process.
I would be very happy to put my thoughts down because I live this, share it with you and then you ask the questions and the poignant questions. Transparency is a big issue. This would not only save money by putting those computers back, it'd be go a long way for transparency versus in August of 2013, the question was, hey, what happened to the computer, why is it gone? Oh, we're, um, we're going online, everything's going to be online, don't worry about it. So, stopped asking, but people getting their money back is a big issue and it, this, it is not just about me. This is a major issue and this is only the few people who know about the money.
If you would provide to the chair, a list of your questions, I'm sure there are members of council that will follow it up. Um, in addition to having a public access terminal, seems to me that we might have some in the neighborhoods where people who have undergone the process of, of sheriff's sale can publicly find out where the distribution of funds has gone. But, thank you for your testimony. Sir?
Let me question one other thing, the letter that you read, that was from the sheriff's office, Vignola's letter.
I have copies of the letter, if you'd like one.
All right, thank you.
I gave one to Frank today in your office.
We can, you get copies now. Thank you. Sir?
Yes, before I really get into my, to piggyback on Joe, this is my first time meeting Joe in person. Joe, I'm one of the people that Joe, uh, doesn't, didn't take funds from my sheriff's sale and he's been coaching me and, um, Joe has been a great, a great aide to me. But, but just for, not for so much my sake, but for literally hundreds of people out there, just like the state of Pennsylvania has excess funds owed to people and they will, they will put in a newspaper from time to time. It is very, 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 I just, disheartening to see an elected officer or sheriff's office that would not want people to receive funds from their property, whether they be living in another state or whatever, what have you. So, I just want to say that. Now, my name is Basil Clark Gibbs. Um, I am probably, to, some people kind of young, but I'm the great nephew of Paul, M. Lawson, used to be a state representative here in Philadelphia and ran the, the UAW in the 60s and the 70s here. And I say that because the woman who I stayed with was his wife, my great aunt, and who just passed last year at the age of 99. We were living, I was living here since, back here since 2002, I used to live in the late 80s, early 90s with her there in West Philadelphia, 55th and Sampson. Anyway, um, through a situation unbeknown to me, I don't have a criminal record, I was, and I say this because we have record, I was actually set up by Philadelphia Airport in 2010, same week the Nigerian boy had the bomber's underwear and I came back and had to fight that case, um, only to win it from January, only to win it, to have everything dismissed in August, literally being drugs planted, I never saw a drug at the end of my day in my life, literally drugs planted on me by the police at the Philadelphia Airport and they would not show the videotape. And there was video that they, that was in their police report that they saw me and my aunt going through, they stuck a TSA computer on me going from here to LA, didn't know about it, this is important. And coming back, um, I was under investigation, they arrested me and anyway, in any way, from that point on, from then to August, um, I wanted the videotape so bad because I knew I was totally innocent. And so, from that situation, uh, after that, um, because when I won that, I turned the police officers into internal affairs, I started getting harassed, that's why I left the city. I don't live in Philadelphia, since that, since 2011, my aunt, she died last year in Columbus, had to fly her body back here because the harassment, I've been screaming, you don't even know. I've been, and I got record, and, and I will say this, the prosecutor here in this city told the judges over there in, uh, the courtroom, um, he said, listen, I told you in July, no video, no trial. And, and here's August and, and she said, well, he said, what's the situation, are the, have you talked to the detectives? And he said, uh, she said, well, um, uh, she started him on, he said, listen, you better get him on the line and find out what's the situation, otherwise I'm throwing us, throwing us out. So, we called us back later on, we went and gone through and she's, and the judge called her up, called her up and she said, I talked to him, she said, when judge said, what did they say? She said, well, they viewed him live. In other words, they viewed me live doing whatever wrong I was supposed to be doing. What was wrong with what she said was, this is on record now, what was wrong with what she said, I had my 95-year-old aunt at the time, I wouldn't put her life in jeopardy alone on my own, but what was wrong with what she said was they viewed me live. If they viewed me live, this is the same week the Nigerian boy had the bomber's underwear at Christmas time, all airports on Amber Alert, why in the world they let me get on an airplane to put everybody's life in jeopardy if I did something, stole the computer or had a bomb or something, seriously. I have all the record for all that. But, anyway, that's why I'm out of the city and when I left the city, um, our house there on 54th and Sampson was furnished, everything, we had clothes in the closet, we just left with a few, a few things that we had. I was not contacted about the sheriff's sale and I understand they considered it had to be vacated. We was, I was back and forth within two years, I wasn't like completely gone and going through struggles and through court stuff. Well, our house, my house got sold, not known to me and with everything in it, I mean, clothes, everything, and then it got ramsacked. And so, when I was, it was sold for 40, $40,000. When I went and fought to get my excess fund, I kept getting ignored, 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 ignored. I bombarded, I bombarded, bombarded. I got something like close to $20,000, something thousand dollars, whatever, and then the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue said I owed them $5,000. Um, I mean, it was sent to the sheriff's paper and I knew it wasn't true. So, I told Lieutenant Guest, Deputy Lieutenant Guest, do not, um, send those funds out. I told Deputy Guest, do not send those funds out to the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue because that money is not owed to them. There was a mistake made, um, with, with, far as me owing the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue. And so, um, I dealt with my accountant and got everything cleared up. And so, I called the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue, they told me, um, Mr. Gibbs, you do not owe us $5,000 or whatever, what have you. And so, I went, so I called Lieutenant Guest, I believe on a Thursday or Friday, um, last year around this time, if I'm not mistaken, it'll be a few minutes, around this time I called him, um, on Thursday or Friday and told him that I'll be in town as far as the next fall and Monday. He said, well, listen, deal with, um, Deputy Sheriff Brown because I want to be there and she'll handle it. So, that Monday, I drove from Columbus, Ohio to Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, I got everything from Pennsylvania Department of Revenue so that I don't owe no $5,000, so the sheriff's department, that money comes to me and, and they already did all the so-called disbursements. So, I brought it here on, and I went to the, the title office, the San Diego's office because, you know, they're already, it's only, you don't double dip, it's only go to one title, so it's $300 supposedly, you want $300. And, and I gave a copy to them, I called them from Harrisburg, came down and I came down here and I sat in the sheriff's office on Monday and Deputy Sheriff Brown was notified that I was here, she came out, she didn't even acknowledge me, she went back, came out, sat there all day, came back and I said, well, maybe lunch, came back. So, I came back Tuesday, did the same thing, you know, totally ignored, came back Wednesday, the same thing. I'm here from out of town, totally ignored. My aunt, you know, is inconvenienced because she's with me, I take care of her. And so, here comes Thursday, I didn't come in, I come in Thursday after sheriff's office talking to Deputy Sheriff Parsons in the hallway and lo and behold, after four o'clock, here come Deputy Brown off the, off the, off the elevator, didn't even acknowledge me, she acknowledges Parsons and says, hi, and then Parsons, can I speak to you? She said, she said, sure. They go in the back, they come back out, well, she comes, she finally talks to me and she's like, Mr. Gibbs, you were supposed to call and we don't do things certain ways, that's not, I said, and I said, I let her, let her talk, I said, ma'am, excuse me. I said, being a public servant, I said, I was here Monday, you see me Monday, I said, it's Tuesday, here's Thursday. I, I got totally ignored, my time is gone and, and I said, you know, you know, I wanted a situation, you know, the money, far, the money comes to me, whatever. And so, what happened was, Paris comes, Washington comes, they push the elevator, they leave, then he turns around.
Mr. Gibbs, can you wrap up your testimony?
Okay. Okay, okay. Yes. Okay, well, here's the thing, instead of the $5,000 that I was supposed to get back from, from the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue, that from the sheriff's department, they were hold, they were holding, they delayed, and they, and I kept getting, when they finally gave it to me, it was only like $3,000 something, I said, well, where is the $5,000? Because, you know, there's no, no extra fund, no money's supposed to be taken out of that and all my tax, because everything's already paid for. And they totally ignored me and said, well, we'll email it to you where it's at. And it's been since last year that I haven't got the excess, extra money and Mrs. Blackwell Paulette, she's worked with me, she's been ignored by Vignola's office, you know, and it's like, I was like, when I told him, I said, I don't, who's, who are they accountable to? They bully people, they bum, and people just walk, people, listen, there are people who got thousands of dollars out there and they just quit because they don't have the tenacity or they, they have stress, heart attack, they don't know who to go to and they don't, they don't, can't pay lawyers.
So, what we're going to do, if we could, is, we actually were listening and we were writing some stuff, I'm sorry, we were listening and writing some of the issues down. And the good thing about this time of year, by hearing from you, is that we actually get to have the sheriff and the departments here. And I would suggest getting from the clerk the schedule when we have that so we can deal with your specific issue, but I think a bigger issue that I heard you talk about, which is the whole policy, that is your individual case, yes, but the whole policy of how access to that information is, and I think we all heard you loud and clear.
And for people, the people, there should be a let, there should be a let know for those funds, for people who have houses sold in the past that got money out the sheriff's department have, they, you know, and their relatives so they can be contacted. Because it's just simply, it's just simply not right. It's not even human, and people get stressed out, you know, no one can get medical bills and no one can pay for lawyers. It's just something to be, you know, just as a common courtesy, you know?
It's, it's actually a part of law that we have to do.
And it doesn't, and it doesn't, it doesn't happen.
It's not, it's not part of law. The, the, there are rules to bring sale, properties to sale, you have to give notice, if you can't find the person, you can post the house. There is no rule that says any government agency needs to look for you afterwards. But, the few people that do find out about the funds really need to be dealt with in a different way. If a check is handed to me, there's absolutely no transparency, they just give me a check for $10,000. It doesn't say, look, here was 65,000 we started at and A, B, C, D and E.
No itemization of cost.
But, I would be glad to submit some stuff to one of the city council people and you fire away.
We will follow up.
And I thank you.
With questions to the sheriff about your individual case.
But, there is no, there's no, the city's doing nothing wrong by not looking for Basil Gibbs. That's not their responsibility. It's their responsibility to give notice, it's the public's responsibility in this county and every other county to come forward, whether it be a lien holder or, or a person. So, that's not my gripe. The gripe is the few people that come forward are stonewalled.
Yeah, yes.
Over and over and over.
And we get ignored.
And I will follow up with somebody.
Thank you so much.
And I thank you.
Are there any questions for this group of people that are testifying? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much for your time and we were here today because we, we, we understand the sheriffs were supposed to be here but, and they had a sale, so they had postponed it. That's why I'm, I'm here from out of town, so.
Sorry about your time.
Thank you.
All right, uh, who are the next group to testify?
Stephanie Singer, Adrian Jacoby, Tara McCoy.
Stephanie Singer, Adrian Jacoby, Tara McCoy.
Oh, by the way, there is a hearing on the Sheriff Department on the twenty-eighth of this month at three o'clock. I know you're out of town and you have travel, but if you're available, or if you can have someone representing you, that will be an appropriate time.
I made a question myself.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your patience, and please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
City Commissioner Stephanie Singer. I'd like to say before I start, looking at the School-Based Family Services Center, I'd like to put in a request that, that those include voter registration, absentee ballot applications, and other support for families who want to be part of the democratic process. I, I know it's traditional to come here and ask for more money for things, but I'm here to ask council to spend less money, significantly less money, nineteen million dollars less than is currently in the capital budget. Only ten years ago, the city of Philadelphia spent twenty million dollars to buy voting machines via a process far removed from the public eye. That process gave us the voting machines we have today, which have some serious drawbacks, including write-in votes are notoriously difficult to cast, there is no way to recount voter intent in case of challenges, and there is only one vendor qualified to maintain the machines. So, the Board of Elections is forced to pay that vendor what the vendor asks, currently several hundred thousand dollars per year, and the Board of Elections has no bargaining power. The proposed capital budget for the upcoming year, fiscal year 2016, would set aside twenty-five million dollars to buy new voting machines. Somebody seems to be in a hurry to spend this money. The procurement process is well underway, though there seems to have been no attempt to gather public input, or even input from poll workers or the technical staff of the Board of Elections. In other words, there seems to have been no attempt to gather input from the people who will be using the machines. Why the hurry? Anyone who has kept an eye on the voting machine market knows that there are big changes brewing. Obama's Presidential Commission on Election Administration recommends open-source software deployed on commercial off-the-shelf hardware. L.A. County in California and Travis County, Texas are blazing the path, developing systems to make that recommendation a reality. The new systems will be substantially cheaper. The not-for-profit Open Source Election Technology Foundation estimates that Philadelphia could purchase a new system for as little as six million dollars. That's nineteen million dollars less than the city is planning to spend this year. So, again, why the hurry? If we wait, we can get a system that doesn't make us depend on one single maintenance vendor, which should save significant money every year in addition to the upfront nineteen million dollar savings. Why the hurry? Federal certification standards are in flux, and Pennsylvania's certification procedures are also in flux, as the Federal Election Assistance Commission revamps standards in response to lessons learned since the last round of voting machine purchases. If we wait, we can be sure to get a system appropriate for the next fifteen years, instead of a system created for the old two thousand and two standards. Some people are saying, well, we have to hurry because we want to introduce the voting machines in 2017, a year we expect voter turnout to be low. But let's be honest, judging by past performance, 2018 and 2019 are likely to be low turnout years too. Why are we hurrying? Before approving twenty-five million dollars for new voting technology, city council should make sure that there's an open process to figure out what voters, poll workers, and Board of Elections staff want and don't want. City council should make sure that we don't waste nineteen million dollars. That's enough money to raise poll worker pay to minimum wage for nineteen years, or to close a substantial portion of the school funding gap.
Okay, we're gonna let everyone testify, and then we'll have questions for this panel. So, put the mic to you.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you pull the mic a little closer?
Okay, thank you. Well, good evening, Councilwoman Jones, and Councilwomen and Councilmen who are here. I'm Adrian Jacoby, I'm the Director of Philadelphia Reads, and I'm delighted to speak to you about, at this open budget hearing today on behalf of Philadelphia Reads. We are here to request a budget item, three, we're here to request three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Philadelphia Reads. And it is, in case you didn't know, an initiative of the mayor, and unlike other nearby cities like Baltimore and Boston, we are unfunded, and we receive in-kind support, which has decreased over the years as well. It's nice to know other cities support this Reads initiative, and they do around the country, but not Philadelphia. So, you know, I said we were formed by Mayor Rendell at the time, right after the President's Summit that was held here in nineteen ninety-seven. And our goal then was to have children, is to provide supports and materials and volunteers to help children read on level by the time they're in fourth grade. Now, we've been doing this for a long time, and today, finally, there's another initiative called Read by Fourth, of which we are on the Steering Committee, and very much an active part of. Our programs are included in that. Of course, we don't receive funding for that, but we would like to. So, in our zeal to improve children's literacy in this wonderful city of ours, and which we are doing so much, it has become very costly, and, and foundation money is decreasing, mainly because it is not a national organization. I mean, there's no national group, even though there's tons of Reads organizations. However, it is more costly not to fund what we do. Here's why, or not to fund initiatives like us. It's, nationally, it's estimated that more than two billion dollars is spent every year on students who repeat a grade because of reading problems. Nationally, over one million children drop out of school each year, costing the nation over two-hundred-and-forty billion in lost earnings, forgone tax revenues, and expenditures for social services. Sixty percent of America's inmates are illiterate, and eighty-five percent of the juvenile offenders have reading problems. We know this, this is an awful thing. So, what do we do? We work from a preventative model, and that is because we work, we want children to read on level by grade four. So, anyway, so can we afford, as a city, not to support Philadelphia Reads and what we do? For example, one of the first things that we did was to start a Power Partners tutoring program. The tutoring program has nine-hundred-and-seventy-five children from about twenty-five schools across the city in Philadelphia. They go to some of the most incredible businesses and law firms here in Philadelphia, from Dow Chemical, Blue Cross, some of the, the largest law firms here in the city, EPA, judicial courts, and they go there weekly for tutoring. And what happens? They gain an additional two to three months in their reading ability as compared to their peers. The second thing we did was that we opened a children's book bank. The children's book bank gives out, one of the purposes was to have books in the classroom, because the more you read, the better you get at reading. So, we have this children's book length, which kind of looks like Barnes &amp; Noble for teachers, and the teachers come and they can take enough, three hundred and fifty books, and very often more, for their classroom library, so that children can read more books. We estimate that we give out about a hundred, actually, we don't estimate, we count, over a hundred thousand books a year, which is worth, if they bought them new, millions of dollars. So, we save the city and we save the teachers quite a bit of money. I mean, the service for tutoring is quite a bit of money. So, the other thing we do is that, is, I'm on my wrong page. So, the other things we do is that we run the Philadelphia Reading Olympics for two-thousand children in the city, public charter, parochial, and, and independent schools. They read thirty-five thousand books to prepare for this program. We also run an incredible, award-winning, nationally award-winning, summer reads program, and for that, the children also do not lose anything over the summer. In fact, they gain an additional couple months, which is phenomenal. So, we're asking you, can you, can we afford to lose a program like that in Philadelphia? We don't have to, if the city begins to support an initiative that is theirs. We do all this in the name of the city. So, we are asking for this money to support these, these children. I just have to give you a couple of comments. For example, one teacher wrote about the Power Partners, about how the child went, it wasn't an English-speaking child, went from emergent reading, and she had to, to grade-two level reading, and she felt that it was because of the mentoring and the tutoring. She said, she does a lot, but that really pushed the child over, over the edge. And teachers, right. I walked into my classroom, there were six books. I came to the book bank, I could not afford to do it any other way. And in the Reading Olympics, the children, the child said, I like reading, but when I got to Philadelphia Reading Olympics, I loved reading. Now, I read almost all the time. And the best quote of all is, is, when I started reading for the Reading Olympics, I stopped fighting because the books were more interesting to me. So, I ask you, please support Philadelphia Reads. Thank you.
For your testimony.
And I have handouts, by the way, for everyone. So, if, if you could give these out, please, that would be great. You can see, there's a map there, you can see all the, you know, the thousand teachers that come to the book bank. You can see where they are.
Thank you so much. Ma'am, you ready?
Yes. Good evening. I too work at Philadelphia Reads, I'm not sure if I'm, there we go. I'm here to speak as an employee of Philadelphia Reads, but also as an educator and an advocate for our city's children. I just want to first start off by saying that I'm a proud product of our public school system here in Philadelphia, having attended some of the finest schools here. But not only have I attended Philadelphia's public schools, but I later went on to work in many of those schools as an educator, as an administrator, and advocate for those same schools for over a decade. And one of the common factors that I noticed in all of my experiences as it relates to the success is the ability and presence of partnerships with non-profit organizations like Philadelphia Reads to provide quality out-of-school-time programming.
Can you say your name?
Sure, Tara McCoy. As Adrian's already mentioned, Philadelphia Reads started in nineteen ninety-seven as an initiative of the mayor's office. And we impact nearly twenty thousand, or rather, over twenty thousand children's lives each year, reaching an average of a thousand classrooms, meaning not only do we impact the lives of the students that we engage, but the teachers as well, and the homes of these children. Not only at the public schools, but also at the early childhood learning facilities through our four core programs, one of which Adrian mentioned, the Power Partners Program, which used to take place right here in City Hall. When the mayor's office launched Philadelphia Reads as an initiative to raise the city of readers, it was sustained mainly through connections and personal relationships of the founder and then Mayor Rendell. But as time moved on, those connections and those friendships and those resources moved on as well. Today, it's time for us to return home to City Hall, where it all started, and request for more sustainable ways in which we cannot merely survive but thrive as an organization. As an out-of-school-time program provider, we support the work of Philadelphia's public schools through our core programs, providing an average of two million dollars in books and supplies for our city's classrooms and school libraries through our book bank, an estimated five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in tutoring services through our Power Partners Program, roughly four-hundred-thousand dollars through our Summer Reads Program, which is an academic preparation to prevent summer learning loss. In addition, we mobilize an average of two thousand of Philadelphia's children each year to compete in our only, it's the city's only literacy competition, where children in grades four through eight read twenty-chapter books, work together as a team, which not only proves that our children can in fact read, but they like to read, and they will be willing to do so provided with the quality and intriguing literature to do so. You may look at our outcomes and think that we don't need any support because we've been successful without it, but that's not the case. We've lost substantial funding over the years, and there's been cutbacks in areas of programming, and currently, we're down to two staff members that are full-time, Adrian and myself, and that's all due to drastic and gradual drops in funding support over the last several years. We're at a really critical point, and as a city initiative, bearing the city's name as an initiative of the mayor's office, we need to strengthen the partnership between City Hall and Philadelphia Reads. As I noted earlier, the beginning years of Philadelphia Reads were based on friendships. Well, I'm here today to ask if we can return to that same model, look into City Hall as a friend of Philadelphia Reads. Thank you.
Wow. And I have questions, but I'm gonna yield to my colleague for both, all panels, but I'm gonna yield to my colleague, Councilman Good, who has not asked a question yet.
So, I need to get on the record as asking a question. Good evening, Commissioner. Are you familiar with the fact that Councilman Squilla posed several of your concerns to the Office of Innovation and Technology?
I was not aware of that, thank you.
And the responses from the Director of that office completely contradict everything you just said. One, they have not come up with a final plan.
I'm sorry, they have not?
Come up with a final plan. Two, they are nowhere close to putting out an RFP. Three, there is a broad committee involved, that also involves the Commissioner's office. Four, they're not sure what the latest technology is, but they say they want to make sure that they know what the latest technology is before they do any of that.
Well, I'm.
So, I would ask, where did your information come from?
So, I'd like to respond one by one, but I didn't write down what you said. So, so my, my information has come from my communication with the Office of Information and Technology, and my communication with Everett Gillison, Deputy Mayor, and with the public, publication of a, an RFI, Request for Information, last October. The last communication that I had from, from Mr. Gillison indicated that they were, they wanted to get an RFP out by the end of March. And I have that letter, I don't have it with me, but I could provide that to you. I am delighted to hear that they are no longer aiming at the end of March, obviously, which has passed, or aiming for any time soon. So, I'm delighted to hear what you tell me.
And you also understand that council does not spend money, council appropriates money.
Yes, absolutely. My, so my request is, is not to appropriate twenty-five million dollars in fiscal year sixteen for voting machine purchases. That's my request to council.
The Office of Innovation Technology is already on the record saying that they don't know what they're going to do. They haven't made a final decision, that they're not rushing that decision, and that the money's not going to be spent that quickly. And so, I assume that it may be possible that less money can be spent, but I don't think anybody knows what that number is.
That's correct, it's going to take some time.
So, if no one knows what that number is, then the wiser thing to do is to put an amount within the budget and within the capital program, so that we have sufficient funds there.
Well, given what you've just told me, which you are the first person to tell me, that the process has slowed down, that the Department of Innovation and Technology has, is exploring a lot of options, I mean, given that information, I.
Yeah, I'm simply telling you that was the response to Councilman Squilla's questions. I'm not vouching for that being true.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, all right, fair, fair enough. I mean, so let me say that if that is true, I'm okay with that kind of fiscal planning. I mean, you know, the bottom line is, I don't want to see this city squander even five million dollars, not to mention nineteen million dollars, and I want to make sure that, that this city gets quality, quality voting technology. Also, I believe you said something, that there was a response that said that there was a committee that involved the Commissioner's office. I believe that's a slight misstatement. I understand that there has been a Steering Committee that has met several times, and that Al Schmidt has been invited to participate, but not, not as a liaison to the Commissioner's office, that was some kind of independent thing. There was no official information to the Commissioners, and, and that Steering Committee did a lot of work before anyone in the Commissioners. And, and that steering committee did a lot of work before anyone in the Commissioners' office or anywhere else actually knew that it existed.
Last thing I would just mention for the record, and I'm not really taking sides in this as much as I'm saying that, I listened very closely to responses to Councilman Squiller's questions, and the last thing I heard was that they would definitely take into consideration what is the latest technology, and even what we think the latest technology may be, may change before this RFP is done.
Well, that's, I'm glad to hear that. If I could just ask you to briefly go over your five points, I just want to make sure that I responded to all of them.
I don't need you to respond to anything other than where you got your information.
Okay. So all of my information is, it's either from public, things like the Presidential Commission on Election Administration-
I meant in terms of what the process is locally-
Ah, okay.
And my understanding is that the Office of Innovation and Technology is actually running that process locally.
That is true, yes.
So we've had recent testimony within council, probably within the last week or two, that that is fresh information. So I was wondering whether your information was fresher than that.
No, it is not.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. A quick question. So I go way back to the Jamestown and chute machines.
Yes.
That's where those hard cast iron monsters, but they were virtually indestructible.
Yes.
So we moved away from that when?
When?
When did we move away?
We moved away from that in, in the early 2000s, like the rest of the country, in response to the Help America Vote Act, which, which not quite forced, but, but really promoted the transition to electronic voting technology.
So-
All over the country.
So when we did that, what was the anticipated life expectancy of a machine?
I don't know that the Commissioners at that time even asked that question.
So how, how long is, so since 2000, they've lasted 15 years?
Well, actually, they were implemented, I believe, between 2004 and 2006 in Philadelphia. So we're, we're going on 10 years now.
And before that, the chute machines had lasted-
Decades.
A hundred years. Okay. So I'm just asking. And so now, what we're trying to gauge, if I understood you correctly, is where do we go technologically going forward? And there might be some better technology, more cost-effective technology. And the Councilman, so well put, that we just want to secure the money, so that if we're pleasantly surprised, and it, it's less than that, wonderful. If it's, if it's where we anticipate it to be, or others anticipate it to be, we'll have it appropriated. So my question becomes, how do they make the determination, what is best, what type of machine? Who's going to do that processing?
Well, I believe that that process should be, there should be an open process where, where input is solicited from all of the stakeholders. And I have a white paper I can provide you that, that goes into detail on that. The, so there, there needs to be an open process. Ideally, kind of following the state law, which says that it is the city Commissioners, or, sorry, that it is the Board of Elections that must purchase the voting machines. Ideally, this process would start from the Board of Elections. The Board of Elections would work with the Office of Innovation and Technology. Now, that's not the way it's happened, and, you know, that's because of where the purse strings are. I, but I believe that the Board of Elections should be much more involved in a formal way. It's going to put the city, it's going to put everybody in a bad position if the Office of Innovation and Technology were to procure machines that the Board of Elections didn't think were the right machines. That's setting up for a big fight.
So to the best of your knowledge, how many vendors are there out there that provide this type of machine?
So there are, so even the notion, so, so the, the thing that's new is that there are vendors that will provide, instead of providing machines, specialized machines, they will provide the service of integrating software with off-the-shelf hardware. So there's a new kind of vendor, and that's part of this revolution that's happening in, in voting technology. Currently, traditional vendors, there are three that are, that currently have machines certified in, in Pennsylvania. So, and the way the, the RFI was written, the, the, the expectation based on the RFI was that, that we were going to choose from among those three vendors, and only those three. There are, there's the model of Los Angeles and Austin, Texas, which is Travis County, where they are putting out an RFP for a whole system. And so you get a different class of vendors who respond, and a much larger class of vendors, which is part of the reason that that model is cheaper. So it's, it's, it's just a more modern, I mean, it's, it's kind of like, you know, having Salesforce instead of having your own specialized consumer relations management software, if that's a, I don't know if that metaphor means anything to you.
Not at all.
Okay. So it's, it's more like, Councilman Squiller, can you help me out here? It's-
Councilman Squiller-
It's, it's like, it's, it's the difference between saying, I have to buy a car that's, because I have to go places, so I must have a car, so I'm going to buy a car for myself, versus saying, I am going to be a part of Philly Car Share. That's actually not a good metaphor either. I'm going to get back to you on that one if I can.
Just, yeah, point of information. I think with the new techno, there is new technology out there that I think IT said they are aware of, and I think the RFI did not actually engage that new technology.
That's correct.
So I don't, I didn't really know. I think they were thinking about putting an RFP out. I don't know if, if they really, the RFP would engage the machines set up sort of the way they are right now with the built-in software, or would they go and put an RFP out to see, to include those machines and the new software technology, because it hasn't even been approved by Pennsylvania yet, the new technology.
That's right.
So I think that was the question on-
You say software technology, Councilman, are you talking about online voting, or just software within the machine?
Within the machine to be able to calculate the tabs and also-
Oh, instant calculation.
Yes, yeah.
Got it.
I mean, online techn, online voting may happen too. I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's a possibility within the next couple of years, but I, I do see that maybe as a possibility in the future.
Well, you get another bite at the apple during the budget, right?
I'm actually not sure because of the ambient confusion about whether, when one is not on the Board of Elections, if one is a city commissioner. So I wanted to, I hope I will, yes, get another bite at the apple.
You are, you are a, I'm not an attorney, but I have one. And, and it's my understanding until January.
Yes, that's right. That's right. That's my understanding as well.
Right. Councilman Good.
Yeah. I believe that the new machines relate to this election or this election year, so I think you're fine. I mean, if you, as a sitting city commissioner, want to make a statement about technology in the future, that's appropriate.
Well, thank, it's thank you. I, thank you very much.
Okay. I want to shift the books for a second. Have they been real patient? Tell, real quick, who funds you now?
Well, we have a lot of funders. I mean, we have-
Are you independently funded, I guess?
Well, well, the Power Partner Program, I would say that 75% of them pay for that service. And so there's about 21 people that pay, 21 companies that pay us for that service. And that, the other funders, I mean, we have funders for the summer, like Dow Chemical. We have funders like Comcast.
So you're not a city line item?
No, I'm not a city line item, we would like to be.
Okay. I got it. All right. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Oh, you're welcome. And we're happy to do what we do. We just want to do more.
I got it. Who are the next to testify?
Mr. or Mrs. Wolk, W-O-L-K, I can't read the first name, Greg Seong, and Elizabeth Olhorne.
Are there any other people here to testify tonight? Seeing none, you are our last panel. Thank you for your patience. And would you say your first and last name for the record?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Corinne Wolk, C-O-R-Y-N-W-O-L-K, and I'm here to comment on the Streets Department budget for the coming year, and I represent Clean Air Council. I'm the Sustainable Transportation Outreach Coordinator for Clean Air Council, and our cleaner commute program supports employees and employers in finding commute options other than driving alone to work, such as biking, public transit, carpooling, and telecommuting. This supports Clean Air Council's mission of protecting everyone's right to breathe clean air by reducing air pollution from car, car traffic congestion. However, these transportation options have many other individual and societal benefits, such as cost savings for commuters, physical fitness improvements from biking, and mental health benefits from active commutes and easier public transportation commutes. While I've always been a dedicated septic rider, I began commuting by bike after I took this position, figuring that I should put my money where my mouth is. Even though I was pretty terrified when I started biking in Philadelphia, it didn't take long for me to fall in love with biking as transportation. Besides being able to speak from experience that biking is doable, going from a terrified non-cyclist to regular bike commuters is a huge asset, and convincing people who don't even own a bike to give bike commuting a try. However, there are days when I wonder if I'm being reckless to continue riding my bike on these streets and recommending it to others. Coincidentally, today was a perfect example. My usual commute takes me down Spruce Street and over the South Street Bridge to Center City. Each route I can choose from offers these obstacles in various combinations: lack of bike lanes, bike lanes blocked by cars, trolley tracks that can catch bike wheels, high-speed traffic, and of course, potholes and debris. I chose my route in part because the worst blocked bike lanes usually don't overlap with streets that have dreaded trolley tracks. Unfortunately, today, that wasn't the case. While going around a truck parked in the bike lane with some other cyclists, I was forced to cross the trolley tracks at a slight angle, and they caught my wheel and almost threw me off my bike. Had I fallen, I would have likely landed in oncoming traffic. Fortunately, I didn't, and luckily, the driver behind me stopped in time, so I was able to compete, complete the rest of my ride to work, even though I was riding out of the bike lane, lane into traffic almost every block because of obstructions. The road quality issues that drivers complain about generally impact cyclists even more. A pothole might damage a car, but it can land a cyclist in the hospital or worse. The same goes for unclean streets after storms and debris and trash in the roads. In a conflict or accident with a driver, cyclists are automatically at a huge disadvantage. Yet with the city's current underfunded Streets Department, we generally get the dregs. The most minimal bike lanes the city can afford on some of the roads it can afford to repave. Many of these lanes, while counted towards our miles of bike lanes, don't deserve to be called the bike lanes because they're too dangerous to use. Even some of our most-used or celebrated bike lanes, such as Spruce Street by Penn or Pine Street in Center City, are regularly blocked because the city has not committed to that infrastructure invested, or invested in protected bike lanes there. Additionally, after winter storms, many of these lanes remain uncleared, forcing cyclists into car lanes. After a rainstorm or when snow melts, without a physical barrier or any maintenance, debris and gravel washes into the bike lanes. This lack of maintenance makes using these bike lanes more dangerous than it should be, and encourages Philadelphians to stay in their cars, add to congestion and pollution, and continue to deteriorate our roads at a higher rate than cyclists. Other cities with fewer air quality problems and equally tight streets are quickly surpassing us on bike infrastructure. Many of Philadelphia's current and potential cyclists affected by dangerous road conditions that could be improved with a larger Streets Department budget are people who can't afford a car or don't want to rely on sparse late-night septic service to get to and from late-night shift work. Additionally, Philadelphia is about to see an increase in novice bike riders on its streets as bike share gets underway. Maintaining our roads is critical to ensuring the safety of our residents and visitors on bike, in a car, or on foot. City Council should support a robust budget for the Streets Department, adding safe, high-quality bike lanes where the Streets Department recommends them. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Hello, my name is Greg Seeny. I live in Philadelphia in the area called Hawthorne. I didn't plan on speaking, but I thought I'd show my support for the Streets budget. I did come here though, because just a couple of weeks ago, less than two weeks ago, I did have a bike accident. I was on my scooter, and I was on North American heading south at night, and just above Gerard, 1400 block area. And I don't know if you are familiar with that area, but it looks pretty much like third-world road conditions. And so I was riding, and suddenly, I was in an area where the trolley tracks were elevated on concrete. So it wasn't just the ordinary dangerous trolley tracks, they were, you know, amplified there because there was like an inch or so of concrete that they were on. So I had to stay, you know, between that and the side of the road. Then suddenly, there was all this gravel coming in from the side of the road, so it just narrowed where I was riding, and so I slowed down to as slow as I could get, and my wheels hit the gravel, though. The scooter went out underneath me, my shoe came off from the gravel, and my foot was dragging on that. And, you know, fortunately, I only have a bruised foot that I'm still limping on, and a, you know, strained tendon, but it could have been a lot worse. It could have been a lot worse. Oh, and gravel marks on my bike. I'm not too happy about. So that area is pretty bad, and I mentioned it to some other people, and they said, yeah, they don't even like to drive in that area. And, you know, there's a lot of economic development happening, you know, in that whole area, but it seems like it just stops right there. And I feel like, you know, for the economy, having that looking nice is going to help move things up and not look like the abandoned North Philly, which it looks like. But I guess really, that's what I wanted to say. I'm just, I was angry about that, so I just showed up.
Sorry for your bike.
Yes, thanks.
Are those tracks abandoned? Are they-
Yeah, they're, they're not used, they're not, yeah, it's not, yeah.
Councilman Squiller, is that, I'm guessing that's Sanchez or-
No, I think it's Darrell. I think it's north of Gerard, right?
Yeah, it's just north of Gerard. You know how North American then does a little kind of, you know, thing so you can get onto Gerard, but if you go north around, it's 14, I think it's around the 1400, below the Crane Arts area and between Gerard and that, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, did you report, I'm sorry, Chairman, did you report that conditions to the Streets Department?
No. I have a friend who works with the city's bike thing, and so I sent him an email saying, hey, this is what happened. But that was it. You know, I, honestly, I didn't really think anything would come of it.
No, it does work. We, we had streets here earlier today, and if we report it and we give it to them, they do get to it in a pretty ma-
We complimented them earlier.
Yeah.
Because they are responsive, so.
Okay.
We have one council person here that represents the entire city, so he's keenly-
Oh, okay. Well, I mean, I've lived here since 1999, and that area has looked like that since 1999, so I didn't think that, you know, but thank you.
Things can change.
Yes.
Thank you for your testimony. Ma'am?
Last but not least, Beth Olhorne, and I'm here also to speak on behalf of Philadelphia Reads. So thank you guys for sticking around here to the end. I'd like to request your support for Philadelphia Reads as a line item. I'd like to speak on behalf of the organization as a volunteer and as the current board chair. I've been volunteering, volunteering with the Power Partners Program. That's the program that brings the students to businesses around the city to, for a power hour of tutoring, basically, over our lunch hours. And so I've been volunteering with that program since I moved to Philadelphia in 2011. And I've read to three different little boys over the course of the three academic years prior to this one, each with very different struggles and different successes. My first student was actually a pretty excellent reader. He was reading at grade level when he came into the program, and I could tell he wasn't being adequately challenged in, in school. And so I would bring him new and increasingly difficult words to stretch his vocabulary. And we started working on complicated phonics exercises, and I was really able to push him in a way that his teacher couldn't, as she had 25 other students with much more demanding issues than his. My second year was more difficult. I was assigned a child whose first language was not English. He struggled with pronouncing even the sounds that letters make. But as we moved through the year, he improved, and by the end of the year, he could go through the full alphabet and had memorized enough words that even when he saw them out of context, he recognized them. It was a big improvement for him. when he saw them out of context, he recognized them. It was a big improvement for him. Last year, I had a student who was again reading well below grade level. As with the prior student, we worked through the year, and he improved greatly, learning the alphabet and learning how rhyming words shared many of the same letters. But even more than that, he learned that he had someone he could talk to. He was very sensitive and started out really shy. He relished the one-on-one attention that he got through the program, and I think it built his confidence in himself. This year, I'm actually the coordinator of the program for my workplace, Dow Chemical, and I get to see improvements in all of the kids who come to Dow each week. We just got the most recent reading test results, and all but two of my kids jumped at least two reading levels over where they were at the beginning of the year, and the majority jumped three or four. My volunteers have been telling me recently that they've seen incredible improvements, and they're proud. They're proud of the impact that this organization has allowed them to have. So, you heard from Adrian and from Tara how important literacy is, and about the number of kids that we help each year, and you heard the statistics about literacy in the city and the correlation between illiteracy and delinquency. But I think these examples that I have of how much this program has meant to me and to the kids I've worked with are just as compelling. Philadelphia Reads is a critical part of education and literacy success in this city. With underfunded schools and fewer teachers spread across greater numbers of students, anyone could get lost in the system. When Mayor Rendell started this program, it was visionary. By bringing students to the volunteers' workplace, it makes volunteering so easy and yet so impactful. It uses the power of volunteers in a way that very few nonprofits are able. But it's struggling financially, and we need the city's help. I ask you to consider supporting Philadelphia Reads financially. The organization needs to have funding stability in order to be able to plan for the future and meet current programming requirements. We need the city's continued financial support to assure the sustainability of the program and all its benefits. It can't stop. The literacy of our young people is too important.
So, Ms. Graham here just informed me that she volunteered for this program as a young lawyer in the city. And one of the things that I remember as a freshman that struck me, Councilman Good, was talking about some of the issues of literacy. And then, he did a fourth grade by fourth grade, if young people don't read up to a certain point, the predictors of bad outcomes and even criminal behavior are connected. And I never forgot that because when he presented that, I said, "Well, if that's true, then we can reverse engineer a solution."
Yeah.
And so, I remember, I remember that sticking, sticking to me. And the other thing I want to do is, there was an article by a gentleman in, from New York, and he was going to a barber shop, and he had his children there, and he found out that there were no age-appropriate materials for his child to read. They were, they were a little more mature, if you know what I mean. And so, he started and embarked upon a program to put age-appropriate books in the barber shops. And I just thought it was so novel to do that, that it's something that, in my barber shops in my district, I'm going to take on.
Yeah.
So, somehow, even if, you know, I think it's meritorious of getting a line item. We'll look at it. But even if it isn't, it's okay to work with individual council people that may be able to find some resources. And Councilman Squill has the richest district in the city of Philadelphia.
We'd love to host something.
So, no, really, I would encourage maybe a sit-down with all of us, and maybe in caucus, and talk about what the possibilities are, particularly as we start to fine-tune what this budget's going to look like for the next fiscal year.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Good, please.
Thanks, Chair. Very briefly, particularly from the perspective of a volunteer, council has outlined three objectives, as you see listed on the easels. One of them is school-based family services center, trying to have comprehensive services take place within those geographic locations. If a condition of general operating budget funds were that the services had to be delivered within those type of centers within schools, what would be your perspective on that sort of policy mandate?
I would like to defer that question to, not just the volunteer here, but to...
No, I actually asked you as a volunteer on purpose.
So, you're, I'm sorry, then, you're asking how I feel about if it's mandated to be in schools?
If the services had to be delivered within schools, within comprehensive family service centers, what would you think about that?
I, well, I think that we do offer programming that is in schools over the summer, for example. But I think that one of the advantages of bringing the kids, well, I think there are a number of advantages of bringing the kids to the workplaces. But for the kids, it exposes them to that kind of workplace. And I actually think that's really beneficial, and it's one of the things that is unique about the program and is, and it also makes it really convenient for volunteers, too, on the other side. I can sign 45 people up at my workplace to be volunteers over their lunch hour really easily because they don't have to go to some school-based service center.
Okay. I want you to consider how it might also be beneficial if those services did take place within the school. I understand the benefit of having it within the workplace.
Yeah.
It's easier for recruitment. It's more convenient. It's, and I understand, it's a model that works. But in terms of, as we're looking at general operating budget dollars and looking at what city investment needs to take place within schools, and how to coordinate our operating dollars with other funding sources for the schools, that's one of the things that we are actually trying to prioritize, how we can have more services take place within schools.
In the schools.
And that's why I asked, and that's why I asked the question. But thank you for your testimony.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. That is, why is it to take as much resources and bundle them when we can, to try to expand the impact of those resources? And I just think, and thank you all for doing that. I remember, so I got, I put on one of those Dr. Seuss hats, went out to one of my schools recently, and my favorite book as a child, as a learning to read, was Green Eggs and Ham. And I just loved Green Eggs and Ham. And so, I remember getting a book, and it came in the mail, and it had my name on it. I wanted to read my name because I had my first piece of mail. I've learned not to like that so much now that I get bills, but back then, it was a joy. So, thank you for what you guys are doing, and thank you all for your testimony, particularly on the bike folk. And we want to take a look at the Streets Department, to see how we can, like, minimize some of the dangers of that. When you described your scooter thing, I was holding on with bated breath because it was scaring me. So, let's see what we can do. All right? Are there any others to testify here today? Seeing none, this committee will stand at recess until Wednesday, April 22, 2015, at 10:00 a.m., at which time, we will reconvene in Room 400. Thank you all.